Let me begin the Spanish interpretation. So if you would like to listen to the meeting simultaneously in Spanish, down below at the bottom of the screen, you have that option. And I'm going to now turn off the videos for people who are not board members or key staff. And John, it is yours.
Great. Thank you so much, Sarah. Appreciate that. And sorry for the late start, everybody. We had a full closed session. I also apologize for my neighbor's loud dog that she leaves outside all night. Anyway, you don't need to know that. Roll call. I've got five board members present. We are still waiting on board members Metra and De La Torre. So when they get here, we will mark them as present. Pledge of allegiance. Please feel free to unmute yourself, stand with me, and place your hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. Your God. Invisible. Liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you all so much. And I have
These are my people, Nicole. They come a few minutes early to make sure they're on time.
And now we have to mute ourselves after doing the pledge together. Sorry. I didn't mention that. Thank you all so much for being understanding. I have to report out a few things from closed session. We have three DN settlements to report out. First one is DN 1008 2021 Final Settlement Agreement. Kindly note that the summary of the settlement is as follows. The district agrees to fund IEE in area of psychoeducation not to exceed $6,500. Motion made by Board Member Foster, seconded by Board Member Leo Vasquez. The vote was seven to zero. Our second one is DN 1009 2021 Final Settlement Agreement. Kindly note that the summary of the settlement is as follows. The district agrees to reimburse parents for students' educational and educationally related services not to exceed $85,000. The district agrees to pay reasonable and compensable attorney fees. Motion by Board Member Metra, seconded by Board Member Foster, and that also was approved, seven votes to zero. Our final settlement agreement is DN 1010 2021. Kindly note the summary of the settlement is as follows. The district agrees to reimburse parents for students' educational and educationally related services not to exceed $16,000. Motion made by Board Member Foster, seconded by Board Member to Build Her Injustice, and that also was a seven zero vote. I do want to note for the record that while I was reading that out, Board Members De La Torre and Metra joined us. So we do have all seven board members present, which brings us to approval of minutes. I need to pull one item from the agenda tonight, which is item four dot Roman numeral four. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda minus that one item? Motion by Board Member Foster, seconded by Board Member Lieberman. I will do a roll call vote. Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So the agenda has been approved minus that one item. We have one set of minutes to approve, October 1, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve minutes as submitted by Craig, seconded by Richard? Any amendments or changes to the minutes?
Am I telling them all of it?
Maria? Oh, sorry. So seeing no amendments or changes, I will do a roll call vote. We're tonight. Craig? Is it thumbs up? Lori?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the minutes are approved, seven zero. Wonderful. So that brings us to item D, Board of Education Commendations Recognitions. And is this going to be Dr. Drati starting it, or Dr. Mora? Dr. Mora, take it away.
Board President, members of the board, Dr. Drati, cabinet and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce this evening Mr. Richardson, Principal of Jams, John Adams Middle School, and Dr. Yuri, Assistant Principal of John Adams Middle School, who will be sharing a presentation today about an amazing program that is taking place at their site. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Dr. Mora. And it is a pleasure to speak to the board tonight. It's been a while since I've gotten a chance to do this. Thank you, President Keen and Maria for visiting Jams last week. It was great to have you guys in the classroom and be in there with you. It was excellent. And I'm particularly excited to see student board member Brianna Cornejo Perez, who is a Jams alum. She was amazing when she was with us and apparently is doing amazing stuff at the high school. So good to see Brianna. I'm gonna just pass this off pretty quickly here. I would, you know, when I started in Santa Monica going on 11 years ago, I, you know, couldn't help but look how, look at the proximity of the college and kind of wonder what kind of relationships do we have with the college? And, and it seemed to be kind of episodic, like someone would come over and do something, but there was nothing really sustainable. And when I got to Jams, you know, I think that excitement, as you have older kids, really even became more urgent. And we really wanted to figure out a way to create something that was sustainable and impactful for our students. And a year after I arrived at Jams, I was fortunate enough to bring Dr. Yuri on to, to our staff. And he's just, he's an amazing advocate for kids. And, you know, I expressed my interest and let him know that, you know, there's something that we can build here to help our kids. And what happened was he built a partnership. And that's what it took. It's not just about a relationship. It's about a partnership. And he built a partnership with Dr. Paul Jimenez, who you're going to meet tonight. The two of them have put together brother to brother, sister to sister mentoring program that I think is going into its seventh year, if not its eighth. And it's been sustaining. It's been impactful. We have some other players, Nancy Gutierrez and Maria Rodriguez here. There's, there's a cast of characters. But Paul and Joseph have really taken the lead on it, and I couldn't be more appreciative. So Joseph, I'm going to hand that over to you. Dr. Yuri.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. I mean, Principal Richardson. Greetings this evening to the board members. It's good to see all you, all you guys, Superintendent Dr. Mora. It's an honor and pleasure to be here. And just to kind of add my perspective to that story that Principal Richardson just told is, I think his words were something like, make it happen. As he said, they had been talking about a lot of things. And one of my first questions when I got here was not if we have a relationship with the college across the street, but what kind of relationship do we have across the street? And when he shared kind of how things had started and stopped, and with the directive of kind of make it happen, and, and he's the one who brought me here, right? We was colleagues in graduate school, and he knew the kind of person that I, that I am, how student centered I was. And so the rest is what we call history. I'm only going to talk for a brief moment, just to kind of describe and explain what brother to brother, sister to sister is. But before I do, I just want to acknowledge the team members in the meeting tonight. Here at John Adams, who have all played a huge part in the success of the program for this, I think it's been six years, but eight sounds a lot better. So we can go with eight if that's what you want to do. But in, in, we have Maria Rodriguez, who's, who's one of our community liaisons and also works with the exploratory leadership program. Nancy Gutierrez, who is a community liaison as well, and does a lot of work with our English language families and ELAC. And definitely we have to recognize our partners, as Steve said, across the street. And this brother, Dr. Jimenez, I mean, what can I say? This is, this is, this is a labor of love and work I've actually come to not only respect, but grow a huge level of love for this, for this man because of his commitment and his hard work. He gets heavy sometimes. I have to carry him, but he gets heavy. But that's what brothers do. You know, he's not heavy. He's my brother, as the song.
Speak the truth. Speak the truth.
Got to. And along with him, we have Janet Tissero, who is in the house. She helps and runs the sister to sister proportion of the program. And there are others, Maria Reynoso. I don't know if she's here tonight, but she's also very instrumental in the program. So I'm going to read just a brief write-up of what we have, and then I'm gonna share a video, and then I'll pass the mic to Dr. Minis. So Brother to Brother, Sister to Sister is a year-long collaborative mentoring program between Santa Monica College and John Adams Middle School. The program pairs male and female Santa Monica College students from the Black Collegians and Adelante programs with students from John Adams. Our Brother to Brother and Sister to Sister program objective is to expose middle school students to positive role models and reveal to each Jams student the amazing wonders of the college world. During each session, the mentors spend time with their students, participating in a variety of group activities and specialized one-on-one time that may include board games, sports, or other activities in an effort to bond with the students. The Black Collegians and Adelante program mentors are committed to developing meaningful relationships with our middle school students while providing encouragement and a tangible example of someone these young men and women can aspire to become. So since pictures speak louder than words, I'm gonna share a video that was put together by Ms. Rodriguez. And then when we come, and then when we come back, Dr. Jimenez, it'll be all you. Share the screen. And I'm having technical difficulty sharing the screen.
So while Dr. Joseph does that, I can go ahead and talk a little bit about what's going on at Santa Monica. So basically, what I wanted to share was not only, you know, we started this conversation with relationships, but really what I've noticed is that we've actually become friends through time. Actually, let me, Joseph, can you mute yourself?
I say that all the time, Paul.
I know. I know. All right. So, so yeah, so we've actually, you know, we've become really close friends, all of us. So Janet, who's also on this call, Dr. Reynoso, who's also on the call. It's been great in terms of building that bond between both campuses, to the point that we really miss each other during COVID. We still text each other, check in, you know, to see how our students are doing. But what I wanted to provide you guys was also the perspective from our male college students and female college students, because the program has really made an impact in their lives in, in ways that they, they weren't aware it was going to. One of the biggest benefits is that our students who got involved, who are either Black Collegians or Adelante students, they, they noticed that they were being held accountable by their mentees. So if they were telling their mentees, hey, you need to, you know, go to school and get good grades, and you have to, you know, pay attention to your teacher, and so on and so forth. Their mentees were challenging them and saying, hey, is that, are you doing that in college kind of thing? So they were, and we noticed that that, that actually changed who they were from an academic standpoint, that all of a sudden our students were doing better academically. In terms of the students who are part of our program, our transfer rates are extremely high. It's something that I think they keep in the back of their mind, like, hey, I have to be successful to be a good mentor. So then I could tell the story to my mentee of, hey, I got into UCLA, or I got into Berkeley, or these other schools. So, but yeah, so I wanted to share that aspect of it because, yeah, it's definitely a symbiotic, symbiotic relationship that's come out of it. I also wanted to, Janet, if you don't mind, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. If you could just talk a little bit about your mentors and specifically how it's been amazing that they've actually had to cut the, they'd have to create a deadline on how long, how, how many mentees, mentors we could take on, because so many of our students wanted to be mentors. So if you want to talk a little bit about the Sister to Sister Program, Janet?
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's having a good evening. So I've been a co-facilitator for
We can't see you, Janet. Sorry.
I can't put my video on. I'm sorry.
Okay.
No worries. No, no, I am blocked from putting it on. So I've been, okay, hold on. Sorry, I was trying. So I've been a co-facilitator for the Sister to Sister Mentoring Program for four years now. And I've been at it at Santa Monica College for five years now, and it's just been a very gratifying experience working for this mentoring program. I know at the beginning, you know, I was a little bit afraid just of kind of taking on this role. But Dr. Jimenez has really pushed me and encouraged me to kind of become a leader myself. And I believe that not only are we offering mentorship between the John Adams Middle School, you know, young women, Black Collegians, and Adelante, but also I feel like a lot of the mentors that I've recruited, and like Dr. Jimenez said, we've had to actually cut mentors because we just can't, you know, provide that many students. So I feel like I've also become a mentor to these college students as well. So it's provided all of us, all of us women involved in this program, you know, just kind of a support network. I know that out of the four years that I've been there, a lot of these women at Santa Monica College have graduated and gone to UCLA, Berkeley, and it's all because of this commitment that they've made in this program. I feel like, like he said, it holds them accountable. They gain a lot of different skills that they didn't necessarily see in themselves before, being leadership. You know, their interpersonal skills grow as well. A lot of the activities that we do with these young women, you know, involve not only bonding activities, but also leading discussions. And so a lot of our mentors are actually the ones that lead the discussion. So we place a lot of responsibility on them as well. So I think a lot of good things come out of this mentorship program. And we definitely miss it because we can't have that right now face to face. So I just want to, wanted to share that with everyone that hopefully we get to continue forming valuable relationships. Again, a lot of our mentors keep asking, when are we going to continue this? I've had other women who have heard about the program email me asking when we're recruiting new mentors. So hopefully we can, you know, start the mentorship program again. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Janet. Yeah, just something to add. Joseph did share about the one-to-one time with the students. But we also had activities with them. So we actually, we didn't even know we had a planetarium at Santa Monica College. And because of this program, we found out that we had one, and then we took the Jams students to the planetarium. So, so we've done a lot of fun things with the students that, again, we've been exposed to more of our resources on campus just because of the, because of your students. So, so yeah, so I just want to, you know, again, thank your guys, your team. From Steve, soon to be Dr. Richard, to Dr. Yuri, Dr. Rodriguez, Janet, I mean, Nancy. I mean, it's just been a great team effort. And yeah, we're just happy that we have this collaboration. Yeah. So if we're ready for the video or take any questions you guys have, but thank you.
All right. So we, we're gonna do a freestyle with the video, because my screen won't share, but let's, let's just do it this way. Can you guys see that? Okay? Just go ahead and push play, and you'll get a feel for what we're talking about.
Man, I can't hear the video. Joseph, I think you need to turn off your speaker, so, because it picks up the sound coming through and gives us feedback. Or can you email that to Steve Richardson or to Sarah Warren-Brock, and then maybe we can just show it that way?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Sorry about this.
Is it a YouTube link? I can?
No. Ms. Rodriguez, Emmy Award producing photographer to put that together. I wanted to say just a couple of quick things. The Sister to Sister Program, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong. When we started, it was just brother to brother. I had always advocated for both. I think it was Paul's bright idea to, to
Oh, man. Let's not even go there. Let's not even go there.
But the beauty was that the ladies were like, wait, what about us? I mean, ladies at the college and the ladies, the young ladies here at John Adams was like, wait, what are y'all doing? And they was like, no, 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 we need to be a part of this. And that, that first year, one of the things that really drove it is that first year, one of, near the end of the year, we had the athletic director, I think he was interim athletic director, Reggie Ellis, come down. And he brought some of the coaches and some of the athletes, some of the star athletes came down from the college to speak to our young men. Remember that Paul down at the Boys and Girls Club? And then the female athletes from SMC and female students from SMC was like, no, no, that's not how it goes. So I was able to talk Paul into, you know, considering to do both a brother to brother, sister to sister program.
Just throwing people under the bus. Yeah.
Nancy Gutierrez is also here. She works closely with the Sister to Sister Program. Nancy, did you want to add anything, say anything?
Something that I would like to say is that it has been like amazing the way that the kids will go, the girls will go to look for me. And right now, since we closed the, the, due to distance learning and everything, many of our eighth grader last year, they were devastated that they couldn't finish the graduate from the program. It helped. My experience is that absolutely Janet and Paul are real when they said, because the mentors will come to me to say, Nancy, I know that these girls counted me. I need to be better because I need to be a good example for them. In that case, I feel that it was a program, it is a program, that it helped both ends, our students and the mentors at the college. And some of them, they already mentioned that they would like to do, some of our girls, like Paula, Paula Murillo, she would like to be a mentor in the long run. She's looking forward for that already. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Nancy. Maria, were you gonna add anything? Sarah, I'll share the video with you, and you can share with the board, you know, at, at your leisure. But I know we have Maria. Did you have anything to add?
Well, I, no, I just want to thank Paul and Dr. Yuri for the dedication. And also, I mean, the, the mentors always spoke of the influence of both adults, Dr. Yuri and, and Paul in their lives. So kudos to you guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just say one other thing, this is, this is, how much time we got? I know y'all got your eyes on the clock. Are we out of time already?
Instead of talking about time, why don't you finish?
Thirty seconds. You guys would not believe the commitment that the Santa Monica College mentors have to this program. Every year, every single time when we sign up and I walk into an auditorium over there and it's full of mentors, I can't believe it. And they don't just show up for this first day. They show up week after week after week for six to seven years, whatever it's been. And I, not that I doubt that they'll show up, but I'm like, this can't be, this can't continue like this. And it has continued. And I take my hat off to Dr. Jimenez, to Janet, to Maria, to that team, to the Black Collegians and Adelante programs. It's been a wonderful partnership, and I look forward to continuing in the future. Thank everybody for your time.
Thanks so much, Joseph. It's really wonderful to hear about this program.
Stage right about now.
All right. So Steve, Mr. Richardson, if you could get that to Sarah, we can either maybe send it out in our, our board notes or put it on the website. I mean, the board needs to see it, but we can probably share that a little broader. If, if you have any interest in getting a proper pennant for over your right shoulder that says Penn, I'm glad Board Member Metra and I would be happy to get you one.
He's got one there. You know he did his undergrad at Penn.
All right, that was blocked. Okay. Then it's all okay. It's all good then. I should, I'll give you more time. Thank you all for coming to report tonight. It, it, it's great to have the community be more aware of some of the wonderful programs being, not just the wonderful programs, but the people who are so committed to the, the students of our district. And that great example of how working with students is, it's so symbiotic. We get, the adults get so much out of this as well as the, the students themselves. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Which now would bring us to
John, John, just to mention that part of the, the program, you see it now, but it was around almost about 20 years ago when my son was there at John Adams, and it was Black Collegians. And at that time, it was just like after-school homework that they would, the students from SMC would come over and assist our, our middle school students, which is fantastic. So we've always had that commitment from, from our SMC student, you know? It's like I say, I'm an alum, so I'm proud to be SMC. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Maria. Yeah, Oscar.
Yeah. Also, you know, it's a great program. I just want to, you know, as a former student at John Adams, I can say that it really does make a big difference, you know, when you have adults interacting with young people at, at the middle school, when, you know, people are forming their identity. And so it's really important that we do this. And there was also a, a time when students from Santa Monica High School actually were taking the sixth period off once a week to go and mentor. They called it the Each One Teach One Program, and it was led by one of our alum Alex Aldana, who started it back, back in the days. He did it at John Adams and at John Muir. So anyway, just want to also give credit for the Santa Monica High School students that have done that great work of mentorship in our community. Hopefully we'll bring that back at some point. But great work, everyone.
Thanks, Oscar. Okay, so I, before we get to the superintendent's report, I was remiss in not mentioning that student board member Brianna Cornejo Perez is also at the meeting tonight. So please let the minutes reflect that Board Member Cornejo Perez was here from the beginning of the meeting. That's my apologies to, to her. Superintendent's report, Dr. Drati.
Great.
Dr. Drati, before you begin, let me acknowledge, because I was there earlier in Mrs. Alexander's classroom at Edison, at Noel Rogers. And I think some of the students are actually on viewing our board meeting tonight as part of their civic, their civic lesson that they were going through today. And I made a presentation on behalf of the board. So there, some of the students are here on tonight. So we'd like to welcome all the students from Mrs. Alexander's class of Rogers.
Yay, Rogers.
Great. So Sarah, do I have sharing rights here?
You should. Do you see, is it opening?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you, President Keen. Okay, a couple of weeks ago, district staff conducted a survey of secondary students, parents of all grades, and our teachers to get an idea of how distance learning is going and where we think we need to improve and adjust to make the teaching and learning experience better. At around the same time, Santa Monica and Malibu CTA also conducted a survey to inquire how teachers are dealing with distance learning. Both surveys served as useful instruments to identify what is working and where we think we need to improve. The information was subsequently used to address the concerns at the negotiations table. I'm happy to report that we have a tentative agreement between admin and CTA that we think will address some of the concerns brought forth. Sarah Braff, the Santa Monica Malibu CTA president, and I will be presenting the results of each survey. And Dr. Kelly will finish with what we can report out at, at this time in regards to the tentative agreement that we have. As mentioned, the school district survey was sent to preschool through 12th grade parents, middle school and high school students, and preschool to 12th grade teachers. The questions asked were very similar, but slightly modified to address their respective audiences. SMM CTA sent their survey to the unit members. I'll first review the district survey, and then I'll invite Sarah Braff to go over this SMM CTA survey. As you can see here, we had over a thousand secondary students respond, approximately 4,500 parents, and a little over half the teaching population responded. So it was a pretty good showing. And thank you all, parents out there, for, for taking the time to actually do this. And so the same with the staff and students. So let's kind of get right to it. Every site was represented in the three surveys, with Samo High having the most, as predicted, because they are the biggest school enrollment, enrollment-wise. So just take a second and just kind of look at it. I'm not going to go over just a pipe jar here. But as you can see, it's pretty, pretty representative of all the different sites. I'm not going to go over just a pie chart here, but as you can see, it's pretty representative of all the different sites. Interestingly, what you see here is by grade distribution. And interestingly, the distribution of grade level respondents with parents and students were pretty even. So it's a good representation of all the different grade levels that responded. And board members, if you think I'm going too fast, let me know. I know some people want to spend some time looking at it. The first question we asked was over how the responders described their experience with distance learning. The answer choices were excellent, highlighted in, excellent, highlighted in blue, good, highlighted in green, poor, highlighted in yellow, and very poor, highlighted in red. As you can see here, approximately 71% of students responded favorably in blue and green. And 80% of parents responded favorably with the same colors, blue and green. And lastly, 69% of teachers responded favorably to that question. When we asked about school-related screen time, the options chose, chosen included too little in yellow, just right in green, and too much in red. As you can see here, 68% of students who responded indicated that it's too much in red and 26% responded just right in green. As far as our parents, 58.6% of parents who responded selected that it's just right in green and 36.6 indicated it's too much. And lastly, 69.6% of teachers who responded said that it's too much. And as you can see here, it's pretty much consistent throughout, except between the students and staff. But parents more were of a different opinion, somewhat of a different opinion. As far as addressing the question of school workload, we asked students to, we asked students how they feel about the amount of work they are receiving. And 47.4% of the respondents said it was too much and 49.6 said it was just right. As you can see, the same response, the same two responses are almost even. When we asked the parents how they felt about the amount of work their students were receiving, 70%, 70% of responders indicated that it was just right. And then, and then 17.5, 17.5 said it was too little, while 12.4 indicated that it was too little. I'm sorry, I read that, I read that wrong there. So when we asked the teachers, we tweaked the question to inquire what they thought regarding students having sufficient time to complete their synchronous and asynchronous work. For those that view, I just want to remind everybody what synchronous means. Synchronous means when the teacher is live on screen working with the students. And asynchronous is some form of recorded work that's done while the teacher is not present. So when that question was asked, 79.4% of the responders agreed that their students had sufficient time to complete their work. And this is from the teaching staff. We also, we inquired about the amount of work students are doing outside of school. 50% of students responded that they are doing, doing more than four hours per day outside of the school, while 23%, 23% said that they are doing three to four hours of work. In turn, the 54% of parents and guardians stated that their students are doing more than four hours of work per day outside of the school day. And then 22.5 indicated that their students working, are working three to four hours, similar to what the students have reported. The question for the teachers was from the perspective of the work they are doing to prepare outside of the school day. In that, 49.7 stated that they are preparing more than four hours per day and 23.4 indicated that they are working between three to four hours per day outside of their school hours. In terms of how students are able to understand the work they are assigned, 72% of the students agreed that they understood the work they were assigned. When we asked the parents, 62% of the parents indicated their students understood the work. And then when we asked the teachers, 87% of teachers felt that they have been able to communicate clearly about the assignment they are assigning. When we asked if they felt distance learning experience is improving from day to day, 53% of students responded that they felt the experience was improving day by day. When the parents were asked the same question, 73% said that the experience was improving day by day. And when the teachers were asked, it was 67.7%. We wanted to see if the stamina of students and staff was increasing as we progress throughout the year. As you can see, 39% of students said it is and 59 indicated that they disagreed, that their stamina was increasing. When the same question was posed of the parents with respect to their students, 51% agreed that their student stamina is increasing and 47% said it was not. The question for the teachers was about their personal stamina with distance learning. And you can see here, completely different from the other two respondents, but 28% indicated that their stamina was not increasing and 72% indicated that it was not. So this was the end of the quantitative information. We did receive about 3,000 open-ended comments that we are still in the process of siphoning through. Before I make that public, this will be public in our website for people to look at. But before we make the comments public, we just kind of go through and kind of blurt out names that people might have mentioned or just do some language cleanup before we make it public. But it's pretty valuable. The comments were from everywhere. Some of them weren't necessarily about distance learning. It was, I presume, there were a lot of comments about bringing the students back in person, which we'll talk about throughout this next upcoming month. There are just a lot of suggestions of where things can improve. So we couldn't really make, we're still trying to find some themes that we can add to it, but we did, we were able to use some of those comments to help us with negotiations and adopt some of those, some of those options that were brought up.
Don't you tell me. I'm sorry, I was on the last minute because we.
Need to mute somebody. Thank you. So all of that will be posted soon. But at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Sarah Braff to take us through the survey conducted by CTA. Sarah, would you take over?
You can leave this page. Go back one, please.
Okay.
So this is a really important, there are two screens here that I hope you all noted, that three quarters of the teachers and three quarters of the students thought that was too much screen time. It was pretty exacting. I mean, it was almost identical. And those are the people who are actually living it. So I just want to point that out and also to recognize that I'm happy to see that, you know, we're starting to improve a little bit in stamina, but we have, the amount of work that it takes to prepare asynchronous lessons as well as synchronous lessons is extensive. And so I just want people to be aware of that. We can go to the next screen. Thank you.
Let me know, keep going forward or just.
And then. Yeah, keep going forward. Yeah. So we had 431 responses out of 601 invitations to respond. So this is two thirds of our staff, of our certificated staff have responded to the survey. So I want to point that out. And you can see how that is split. Yeah. And this is the split, this is pretty similar as you would expect. We have more students in middle school and high school, so you can kind of see how that splits out. Next one. Okay. Technical issues. How many times have you had technical issues? And as you can see, there's quite a few. We have issues with bandwidth and freezing out, as you know, and those kind of things. And so we need to see if there's anything we could do to boost that. Next one. Next one. Next slide, please. Okay. One slide before this, I think. Did we get out of order a little bit? Yeah. Do you have the essential equipment that you need to teach online? And as you can see, 67% do and 33% don't. What that generally meant was that they have old equipment that is not up to the tasks that we are now expecting on distance learning. So that's something to be looked at and to maybe put in the budget. Next slide, please. How much time do you think is needed on a weekly basis for professional development? And my group, if they could have picked zero, they would have. We didn't give that as an option, but as you can see, an hour a week at most is the new information we could take in at this time. Because recognizing that the amount of learning that takes place in order to do distance learning has been enormous and extremely taxing on everyone in terms of the learning curve. And so we felt very strongly that this wasn't the time to add new curriculum, a new professional development. Next. Okay. How many minutes are you spending synchronous learning? And as you can see, most people are spending three to four hours a day live. These are teachers we're talking about here. You'll notice some people are not, and that's because they may be a nurse or they may be in a different position than a classroom teacher would be. Next. Okay. And how many minutes are spent asynchronous? So on top of that four hours, here's another 60 minutes or 60 to 90 minutes or even more than that of asynchronous learning for both our students and in terms of preparation from our teachers. Next. Okay. How many additional hours do you work outside the regular day to prepare and plan your lessons for synchronous and asynchronous teaching? This does not include grading, parental contact, professional development, or other work. And as you can see, most of our teachers, more than 50%, are spending two to six hours a day and 15% are spending six or more hours a day. And that's just on planning and lessons. Next. On average, how many times per week outside of the teaching day? From lesson planning and creation, as in the last slide, do you spend grading, communicating with parents, and taking professional development? Again, you're seeing quite an extensive number of hours. So this is, you have the planning hours and then you have all the other hours. And it is quite extensive and not very sustainable. The stress level on our teachers and the stress of our teachers is quite extensive. Next. Thank you. Okay. This question, we did not allow multiple answers or these percentages would have been a lot higher. As I'm sure everyone in this audience can attest to, it is not easy to sit in front of a screen extensive parts of the day. It's not easy on your eyes. The amount of migraines and back pain and other issues are coming up because teachers are not having the time also to get physical. And so they're sitting too long. Thank you. Next one. Okay. This is what we call a word cloud. We put in every single comment and there were over 400 comments. And the algorithm sets how many times these words were mentioned. And you can see by the size what was mentioned the most. And you will see students were mentioned the most and time was mentioned the most. And these are the two things that students and teachers both need. Thank you.
So at this time, as I mentioned earlier, we did sit down with the teachers, CTA negotiations team. We've been meeting for the last two weeks. I'm glad to say that we have a tentative agreement. That was finalized actually this afternoon. So I'm going to bring up our chief negotiator, district office does a wonderful job of just taking us through all these negotiations. And so, Dr. Kelly, would you take us through what we came up with?
Sure, sure. So just to set the context, and I'm going to do this in partnership with Braff. To set the context, we began meeting with the, first of all, we had an original memorandum of understanding and agreements with regard to distance learning and the reopening of school. And we committed at that time to continue discussions with the teachers' union. And after several weeks of the opening of school, we began again meeting to speak again about the MOU and to consider some, really the findings, what you've seen here tonight. And as we met, one of the things that we were able to do was to really establish kind of a common interest, which was, you know, to maintain the momentum of positive distance learning as was articulated in the surveys, while finding a way to make some adjustments so that distance learning becomes sustainable over the time. As you see there, there is really kind of physical, intellectual, and emotional demands that are placed both on the teachers and students. And so we've been meeting with the teachers, having quality conversations, collaborative discussions, to really try to find some ways to just make some adjustments that again, meet that interest of sustaining implementation of the distance learning over a period of time. And so Ms. Braff is going to kind of talk us through what we have so far. As Dr. Droudi said, we are just putting the final touches on an agreement. But for the most part, we have many elements that we've already agreed to and we're just finalizing the rest of the language.
Great, thank you. We clarified that live instruction includes a variety of instructional activities. And at the discretion of the teacher, students may be excused from being on camera so they can come on and off to do their work. They don't have to be on the camera the entire time. Removed live instruction block after lunch for TK and Kay. We found that those students were just wiped out by lunch and they were done. And so we're recognizing that. And I really want to take a moment to thank both teams because this was really quite extensive and had to be done under a lot of pressure in a very short amount of time. And everybody was cooperative. And so, thank you. We removed the expectation that high school teachers are required to open virtual meetings five minutes before the start of the period. Embedded professional development is encouraged, but is now voluntary. We added one student workday to the first semester and three to the second semester, which means that live instruction on student workdays will be limited. Most instruction will be asynchronous. Those are workdays for grading, report cards, a variety of different work things that teachers need to do. No elementary synchronous instruction blocks after lunch on minimum days. There are about six minimum days a year. They're all there for a reason. And so the afternoons are needed for parent conferences and things like that. We altered elementary office hours expectation for teachers from 30 minutes five days a week to 30 minutes two days a week. Teachers will communicate their office hours to parents weekly so that we still have complete access. Negotiating parties have additional items that will be shared, as Dr. Kelly said, once they have been finalized. But again, I want to take the moment to say that we have to make these adjustments. It's really important in order for our teachers and students to be able to keep their learning going in an enthusiastic and engaged way. Thank you.
I'm going to stop sharing. So that somewhat concludes just the report of the work that has been done to address the concerns identified in the two surveys. We think we have something good going forward. We're going to continue to monitor just along the way how things are going at the site levels. And I encourage. And I encourage all parents to really stay in tune with your teachers, your principals, and engage in those conversations. If you see things that are not working for your child and so on, so that way they can troubleshoot. So, Mr. Keen, were you guys gonna ask questions about this?
I know that we have a couple people that signed up for comments that either are loosely tied to this item.
So I think only one of them, one of them signed up for the superintendent's report. The other ones look to seem like they're about reopening, which is not what this is about.
So we have one, we have one public comment based on the survey and the report that was just given.
So just at the end, before I conclude the superintendent's report, there's a few more items, a couple more items I want to be able to point out.
Then you should finish what you're talking about now, please.
Okay, great, great. In terms of, I know some parents have been sending emails about where are we with athletics and all that. I just want to let the community know that we have been meeting with athletic directors and athletic directors in turn have been meeting with the coaches. They have about ninety-nine point five percent of the protocols in place. And in fact, as coaches, they can possibly start sharing what those protocols look like to the parents. But we are real close to just saying, hitting the button and starting the exercises for athletics. Now, we are limited with competition. There's no competition allowed within the protocols. But students can start the preparation for getting in shape and just conditioning for athletics. But we are confident that as soon as within the next two weeks, we'll be, either next week or the following week, we'll be ready to move forward on it. We've just got a few more items to finalize, and then we'll be ready to go. So, parents out there, stay in touch with your athletic director. They're in touch with us. They know what the issue is, what the situation is. And they also have the information around what needs to happen in order for us to keep the coaches and students safe. So that's one. And then lastly, for those of you, hopefully you received a letter from me last week, two weeks ago, just around the conversation we are having in the entire community about reopening. And so we've had several constituency groups I've been meeting with. There's a town hall next week starting, and there's another one following next week. Next week on the twenty-first, I believe, is secondary. And then the following week, it'll be elementary focused. But we are gonna send out information about how we're gonna conduct a town hall. We're gonna make a few adjustments to how we do it. We're gonna possibly identify, obviously, we're gonna collect questions that people may have. So if you have questions that you may have, we'll set up a situation in which you can give us some heads up on what you're asking. And then we possibly are gonna call on some families to just to answer, respond. We will have to limit the amount of questioning because I imagine we'll probably have over a thousand people each time. And it's hard to really, you know, the meetings I'm having right now are averaging forty to fifty to sixty people, the smaller groups. But there's often a lot of questions. And to kind of go through all of that, we will be there till midnight if we don't manage it. So please note that we are listening to you. We see everything, and this is a complicated, complicated matter. And if you haven't read it in my messages or heard it from me, I'm telling the community and I'm telling the board that we think the earliest we can come back in a full reopening is the second semester. And but there's still a lot of things that we have to put in place between now and then. With that said, Mr. Keen, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Droudi. So we do have the one public comment on this. So why don't we ask Board Member Lieberman to?
Yeah, we have one person signed up to speak on the superintendent's report, and that's Nikki Kohoff. Nikki, I cannot see. There you are.
Yep.
Okay, you'll have three minutes, so go right ahead.
Okay, great. So, yeah, well, with respect to the survey that just happened, I think it's unfortunate that parents were not told what the survey was gonna be used for. Because prior surveys were taken, and then they weren't particularly useful because they led parents to certain results, but also the results weren't used for anything. And this one finally asked people to plug in their personal information, which a lot of people didn't want to do. And there wasn't really a reason because you weren't asking us if we were coming back or not coming back. So a lot of people didn't answer it, and it turns out you were using it to negotiate with the union on actual screen time and what the requirements were of their contract. So you guys really need to communicate when you're doing surveys, how the information is actually gonna be used. And then, you know, following that into, you know, the town hall, I went to the one yesterday. You don't have forty to sixty people. You had twenty-five yesterday, and half of them were staff. I don't understand how we're supposed to vote on the two options after these town halls. It feels like from the presentation we got tonight with the data that we're in the lack of preparation for a hybrid apex-type model that I don't see how we're gonna be prepared for anything but some sort of distance learning. You know, we're not discussing this as a community. You guys just had a negotiation with the union about what the teachers want to do, and you have some results from a survey from parents, but we're not actually sitting down and talking about it. And yesterday I asked Dr. Droudi about that, what he finally agreed to sit down with parents and have a conversation about what we're seeing other schools doing and what our friends are doing, what maybe our parents are doing as teachers in other schools, what people's other kids are doing, what our friends are doing in other districts. And he said, no, parent committees come with issues. He was also very rude to me because, as I cited, his actual failure to comply with law and meet with parents over the summer and failure to collect written comments over the summer, which are objective facts. He said, I had misinformation in my statement, and then I asked him, because it was a public meeting, to state what the misinformation was. Because he does this every single time. He wouldn't state anything, and I just think it's rude. He can't, he cannot deal with folks that disagree with him, which is why he doesn't hold parent meetings. And that's why he's discovering right now the notion of synchronous learning and cameras in a classroom. So we really could be a lot farther down the line if we were really all working together. And we're still not doing that. And so I, you know, I just, I don't see how we've moved really even beyond the last survey, beyond adding a bullet underneath.
Speaker's time is up.
It could be asynchronous.
You did, and I just said, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, that was muted out. So I don't, I mean, this is a superintendent report. If there is something pressing that a board member needs to ask, I want to give them the opportunity. I just don't want to get into the habit of extending superintendent report for board member questions that could be elsewhere in the agenda. Yeah, Maria.
I just have a question, Dr. Droudi. I know that when you have a town halls, we took part in, and it was just a lot of people, and it's hard to do question and answer back and forth in those town halls. Will there be an opportunity for parents, let's say through their school site councils or their PTA meetings, maybe, or any kind of meeting at each of the schools that they can have further discussion within that school about what they want to see with their principals and their parents within the school, and then the principals can come back and relay that information to your executive, your leadership team?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. If you, for those of you that, if you for some reason missed the letter that we sent home, several, we've been sending a lot of information home. So for anybody who's ever has a lack of understanding for why we're, or doesn't have the information, under my page of the website, all my communication for the last three or four years are there. So to be more succinct to answer your question, Mrs. Vasquez, if you look at the letter that went home most recently, we actually talk about the communication plan that we have and the journey that I'm going through in the entire community. So there's several, every night I'm out, all this week, all last week, I was out, this whole week I was out. And we're gonna culminate with a two-town hall, so I'm gonna be in face of so many different parents in that process. On top of that, the principals are also gonna engage with their school site. So if you remember what happened with us planning for distance learning, and I want to remind everybody, if we did not listen to the community, we wouldn't have made the adjustments that we are currently feeling if we didn't make those adjustments. Because people's feelings about what happened in the springtime with distance learning are completely different from what's happening now based on the survey results. All those things were a response to us listening. Okay, the surveys we took out. So we are responsive to it. So I disagree with a lot of what Mrs. Kohoff said here. Obviously, people have the right to your opinion. I'm a very collaborative, we're a very collaborative group. I take the, going from that idea of Apex to to another tool that we can use to synchronize instruction simultaneously while students are home on campus was a direct response to us listening. Okay, was a direct response to us listening. It wasn't, if we were not listening, we wouldn't be going there. So as I want to be able to say that, we have to manage all the different perspectives that people have and try to find a way forward. And so in the communication, Leon Vasquez, you'll see that I'll be talking to students, parents from different stakeholder groups, and generally with a town hall, where I imagine we'll probably have a thousand people. So that's a lot of families. And then we're gonna survey everybody. And then the principal is also gonna communicate with their respective sites about some of those choices. So there should be a lot of things coming.
Thank you so much, Dr. Droudi. So I'm gonna move us on because I don't want to get us sidetracked on non-agendized items, and we don't respond to public comment in that manner. Yeah, is it about the superintendent report, Oscar?
Yeah, real quick.
Please, yeah.
In terms of, I know that the county allowed school districts to start serving students with special needs, so students in our special education program and also English language learners. There might be more categories of students that the county is allowing us to bring back into the school setting, I guess, with all the right protocols. Are we doing that now? Are we serving students on campus for those students that who need that type of support?
Yes. So what Dr. De Torre is talking about is, we're still under the purple stage of reopening. And within, under the purple stage of reopening, the county has authorized us to be able to serve specific students, like the English learners and special education. And we're in the process, but right now we have to apply to be able to do some of those things. So we're in the process of doing that. I think Dr. Powell has been working hard to develop, has put in the application, and we're waiting for that to occur. In the meantime, with special education, we have been successful in, with Diana Seinfeld's work, in really establishing an agreement with the teachers and both units to have the assessments for special education. Our next conversation is around which students do we need to serve upcoming next. So we're getting real close to being able to establish that. So look, I wish I can just flip my finger with all these things and let it happen just like that. I wish I was that powerful, but I'm not. And so we have to go through a process of so many different people, making sure that people feel safe, that we have the equipment ready, and that people are ready to be able to do this work, just for the students' sake, for the staff's sake, and so on. So we have a lot of work to do, and we're making progress.
Thanks, Dr. Droudi. And you, just having come out of CDEC meetings and our early ed DAC meetings, I want to really stress that staff is doing everything they can to get vulnerable students, students that need that in-person attention. They're doing everything they can. Our holdup right now is happening on getting our waivers approved. It's been four weeks. They said it was gonna be a five- to six-week process. This is just a bottleneck that is happening. I don't want anybody to think that our teachers are standing in the way of these services. Our staff is on incredible work, waiting for the approvals, and it's not from the union. The approvals are coming from county and state. So we're hoping that we get to the front of that line soon. On that same note, I just want to thank Sarah Braff and Dr. Kelly and Dr. Droudi for communicating the survey results together. I think it's really encouraging to see our head of our teachers' union, the chief negotiator, and the superintendent coming together to report and to show how they're working collaboratively. I'm not sure how many other districts have relationships like that. And I really thank you, the three of you, for putting that presentation together, which brings us to consent. Does anybody have anything that they need to pull from consent?
John, I want to ask a question on one of the purchase order items. And then we have a public speaker on, let's say it's F, what is it? So it's F, which is consent, three, small seven. So I guess.
What I'd love to do first, though, is to find out if anybody wants to pull something or questions like you have. Get a motion, get a second, and then we can have the public comment. So I guess I.
I move the item. I'll move consent.
Seconded by, well, I want to move until we have to pull something. I'm gonna see if we have to pull anything. So is there anything anyone needs to pull?
Yeah, I want to pull the purchase.
I want Lori to address her issue.
You have to allow comment before you pull.
We can, please let us do our work. What is the item, Lori, that you need to address?
There is a, I can barely read it because I printed it, and it comes out so small, but there is an item on here to the, for, I think it's five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It's to pay for the parking at the DoubleTree Hotel. And so it relates in a way to what we do or don't do later. But I wanted to have someone, I think it will probably be Carrie, but maybe Melody, someone clarify what happens if we vote to pay this now, or is this just a?
I think, yeah, I think this is what we talked about two weeks ago, which was the up to, it was a ceiling and not a mandatory payment. Why don't we pull all the POs? Let's pull all of two, Roman numeral one. And then we will address that after consent. So I would like to present consent. Pulling two point one, do I have a motion to approve consent?
You have to listen to public comments.
I'm going to get to public comment, and I need you to please respect the process.
Mr. President, if a member of the public continues to unmute themselves, they need to be removed.
I understand, but let's, I want a motion and a second. Then we will have questions in public. So moved by Richard. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lieberman. Great. So I have a motion and a second. Do I have any clarifying questions before I go to the one public comment? Seeing none, we will go to public comment now. Ms. Lieberman.
Okay, we have one public comment, as I said, on item three, Roman numeral seven. And that's the amendment to the agreement regarding Santa Monica High School, the Discovery Building Project for Architectural Services. And the speaker is Nikki Kohoff. You'll have three minutes.
All right. Well, I guess what I would suggest is when you're pulling an item prior to listening to public comment, and you know there's public comment on an item, it doesn't look as if you are going to have any regard for the public comment on an item if you're choosing not to pull it and you're waiting for the item. So just as a matter of looking like you might actually listen to the public whom you serve, if you might want to listen to the public comments before pulling items. So this is just a perfect example of your construction getting out ahead of itself. F three seven is an amendment to the Discovery Building, but it really has three pieces in it. One is bringing a full-time architect on staff that was supposed to be in an office, who I guess is being moved to the building, and we're paying another hundred and fifty grand a year almost for that. But more importantly, phase three is being built as part of this, something about the steps for phase three, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars to design the steps for phase three, which is not this phase. And these are how we chip away at phase three. And then you will say that we've now gone so far down the path, we've spent too much money, we can't possibly turn back now. And this is being done as a consent item, and if it's thirty-eight thousand for the design, then add a zero, three hundred and eighty for the construction possibly. And so why would we be doing this now? And why would we not call it out as a phase three project? We have a lot of controversy out in the community now with a petition circulating to save the historic history building. And you guys are gonna continue moving forward with a project that is. And you guys are going to continue moving forward with a project that is going to cost us bond dollars. And so it may seem like a small amount, but it's a big statement to the community that you are not listening to them. And you are moving forward with a project that hasn't, in fact, been fully approved. And you've never had this project fully presented with its entire structure and cost and purpose. The whole reason you're pitching this is that it's an expensive but flexible building, so you can do whatever you want in the future with it, but you don't really know what's going in it yet. And these are just the stairs for it. But why do this now? Wait later, after you've responded to the community, who's now asking you to please save the history building. It's just not appropriate to move forward with this now. And you need to engage with your community. I think they're starting to speak loud and clear, not just a handpicked tiny committee of folks, but your broader community on whether you should preserve the historic assets of our campus. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I do want to, for the, I assume that the members of the board have read the agenda as submitted. So they will have read that in this item. It does say it was more economical to implement this work now as part of the Discovery Building Project than to leave the unsightly and inefficient conditions until a later phase of work, especially considering the reduced impact to the campus while students are not on site. That explains the $38,000 expense that Ms. Kohoff was referring to. So I assume that was read by my fellow board members. If they do need more clarification, Steve Masetti is on this call and can address that. Seeing none, I would like to move consent. We already have moved consent minus items two, one. We have moved and seconded, I will do a roll call vote, Ms. Lieberman.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Metzer.
Yes.
Dr. Chabiller and Jessman.
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez.
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre.
No.
And I'm a yes, so that is six to one for consent minus items two, one, the POs. So Carrie.
John, I do apologize, it's Sarah. I just want to remind you that item four, Roman numeral four, we'll be coming back at the next meeting. I know you announced at the beginning of agenda approval, I just wanted to remind you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Blah, 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 blah. So for the purchase order, there's that one item about the parking that we discussed two weeks ago. I'm wondering if either Steve Masetti or Carrie Upton could address any questions that board member Lieberman has on that.
Carrie. Carrie, your sound's not coming through.
I switched to phone, okay, hello, this might work now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is the item on page 10 of the purchase orders. I think it's the sixth item down to, it's off-site parking for the 2021 school year to Santa Monica Hotel owner for $535,500. As many of you know, while we are building, since we've taken down, since we built, actually, before we began the process to build innovation and the building of Discovery has left San Mo High lacking in parking. And so we have been renting spaces of parking first from the city. But when their prices went up a little bit and they didn't have availability for us, we moved a lot of those to the Doubletree. So right now, we are planned to use around 210 spaces during the school year at the Doubletree. Right now, they're being used for construction. We'd be paying for it either way, but they're being used for construction. But we are booked to use them over the year through June. If later on in this meeting, you were to say yes to the purchase item, then what we would do is we would go back to the Doubletree and we would remove those items and that amount of money. We'd only be renting 100 spaces from them rather than the 102, well, we'd be renting 116 spaces as opposed to the 100, taking away 104 space. So the contract is written and they are aware that if the sale goes through, that we will be taking that out of this contract.
So as a technical matter, then, should we be approving this entire amount? I mean, usually purchase orders are for commitments already made, and we are just approving the transmittal of checks, basically, so.
Yeah, actually, it's a not-to-exceed number. The purchase order is a, is an approval by you not to exceed a particular number. It's not the payment yet of of that purchase order.
Okay, that, I don't think that's what is ordinarily the case.
Carrie, I have Marie with her hand up first, so Marie, then Oscar, please.
No, just, just for clarification, so that, so we're paying for 200, I don't think we're using 210 spaces. So does that mean that we pay for the spaces we are using? And you, when you're saying up to this amount, that means we only are going to pay for the, for the spaces that we are, will be using?
Carrie, do you want me to address that?
Yes, we'll jump in.
So one of the things we talked about two weeks ago was we've worked out with the with the Doubletree, and it's in our agreement, that each month, we're going to notify them how many we need. Now, right now, we're using less than a full amount, obviously, because the number of staff is on campus. So I think it's a, it's a big point. And what we've done is agreed with them, hey, we'll tell you what we need, we'll pay you for those, and that's it. And it's so far been less than the number that was reflected as our not-to-exceed. Going forward, it will be the same. And then, of course, to Carrie's point, if this terminates, I'm sorry, if the other deal goes through, then we'll need to reduce the amount that we're renting from them every month anyway.
Okay.
Oscar?
Yeah, no, just the same question, you know, just a concern about that, we're, are we, are we spending money, you know, that, that maybe we could be saving? But I heard also that we're, we're paying for parking spaces for our construction crew. And one concern I have there is, is that that's, that's an expense we're, we're bearing the cost on. And shouldn't it, shouldn't, shouldn't that have been part of the, the vendor contract, like when we contract with the company? Or they should be given as a discount on that? They, I mean, I'm thinking maybe they should pay for, for those parking fees.
It's, it's a good question.
Steve, if I could, if I could, because we covered this two weeks ago, in that, in, in either the contractor pays for the parking fees themselves, what Carrie Upton was able to do was go to the Doubletree directly, negotiate a lower rate than the, than the, than the contractor could have done himself, thereby saving the district money. It's the same money whether the contractor pays it or we pays it. Hey, it goes to the same contract. Carrie negotiated a lower rate, which actually, in effect, does save the district money by doing it this way.
Plus, there's no markup to the contractor, that's right.
But the question, Lori, your question of how we present us on the PO is still out there. I'm not quite sure how to get you the answer for what you asked on that.
Yeah, and I'm really asking that because we approve contracts of certain kinds. Certain contracts are just entered into by district, by district staff within their authorized responsibilities. And then the POs come to us, and we basically authorize payment of contracts we've already entered into. So I'm not trying to nitpick this, but I do think it's important that we understand generally what we do and what we're approving, because we do approve contracts sometimes up to a certain amount of money. But that's not what we usually do, I don't think, when we approve purchase orders.
Can I, can I take it? Okay. On purchase orders, yes, many times it is correct, Ms. Lieberman, that it is how you, how you stated it at the beginning, that we also have it up to a certain dollar amount. We may not have, we like to get POs basically approved through you all first before we go and spend the money and then say, hey, why don't you go ahead and approve the hut? And so this is just a common formality of this is what we're going to spend. Therefore, here's what we're putting in there, it could be up to this amount. Otherwise, they got to keep coming in and doing another PO if it was more than than that. And so it's just, it's an up-to situation.
Okay, I, I'm fine with that. I just think we should find a way to indicate that. And I know that the electronic agenda makes everything somewhat more difficult because it's not as responsive to the old-fashioned way of, of putting these things together. But if you can try to address that in the future sometime, that'd be great.
I could talk with staff and see whether or not, we could look at the system and see whether or not there's ways to put notes in there or something to that fact, especially something to that number.
But to, to be clear, to board member Lieberman's point, besides the, the process way, we'll try to address this going forward.
Oh, absolutely.
Cutting a check for $535,000 to the Doubletree. So do we have any more questions or comments on this, on the, the purchase orders, the POs?
I move the item.
Moved by Richard, seconded by Craig, roll call, Lori.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Maria.
Oh, abstention.
Abstention, Oscar.
Abstention as well.
Okay, and I'm a yes, that's five yeses and two abstentions. Great, so that finishes consent for the evening. And now that brings us to discussion item, discussion item G1, which is consider revising BP and AR 5141.6 School Health Services. Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
I think Susan Bronstein is on for this one. Can you hear Susan?
I did see her earlier.
Susan is here, this is Tara.
Let me find her real quick, sorry. Maybe she's not able to unmute, hold on. Oh, Susan, Susan is there, oh, there she is, hello, Susan.
Hello, good evening. Okay, Sarah, were you going to put up the PowerPoint?
Showing, can everyone see that? Nope, that's the wrong one, please hold.
Do you, do you want me to do that one first, Sarah?
No, it's okay, I just clicked on the wrong guy, there we are, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to be talking about the changes, the proposed changes to board policy in AR 5141.6. We're going to be talking about the board policy to be updated, to clarify who may provide health services, and to state that the district may now bill both public and private insurance programs for reimbursement of services. So the state plan amendment from the Department of Healthcare Services 15021 was approved in April 2020. And it went into effect in July of 2020. And there are new qualified service providers that may now bill for Medi-Cal services. And examples are the occupational and physical therapy assistants, the associate marriage family therapists, and associate clinical social workers, as well as orientation and mobility specialists, registered dietitians, and respiratory therapists. This is all new, and this may bring increased revenue to the district. Okay, next slide, please. The administrative regulations, we're proposing they be updated to expand the types of health services to include additional services which districts can receive Medi-Cal reimbursement. And this is all due to the SPA 15021 updates, which went into effect. And examples of these now billable services are OT and PT group sessions, assistance with activities of daily living, nutrition counseling, and targeted case management for IEP and IFSP students, respiratory care, and targeted, oh, I already said targeted case management. In addition, the nurses do mandated vision and hearing screenings every year in various grades. And now those can be, we can bill for that now, and it could actually be retroactive for a year. So that is new due to this SPA 15021 amendment. So that, that can start, and it could be retroactive to a year. The next item is for the employees, the requirement for employees to complete a random moment and time study for Medi-Cal administrative activities. And districts are, must participate in the random moment and time study in order to be reimbursed by Medi-Cal. And this is federally approved web-based methodology, which captures time spent in Medi-Cal administrative activities and direct service medical activities for enrolled students. And we have had the random moment of time study for, we've had it since, I believe, 2015. But previously, it was just for Medi-Cal administrative activities. And now it also is for direct medical, direct services. And the next item is reflect the new law of 3192, which requires the Department of Healthcare Services to develop a program guide for the Medi-Cal billing option program. And they previously had a manual, and now they're going to have a guide. And I spoke to them the other day, and they are in the process of developing that program guide. And this is to reflect the new, the new changes in the 15021. And what else do we have here? I think that is pretty much it. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Bronstein? Okay, so thoroughness will lead me to say, do we have a motion to amend the?
It's a discussion item, sorry.
It will come back, I realize that, thank you. It will come back to us. So with no questions, I guess we will just say, thank you very much, and we will see you on November 5th to take action on this. Correct, Sarah?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, which brings us to discussion item G2, consider revising BP and AR 5141.52 Suicide Prevention. Dr. Kelly, who is going to, is?
That would be me, Tara Brown, hi. Good evening, everyone. Can you see that? Yes, I can, thank you, Tara. So we do have before us tonight to discuss some proposed changes to the BP and AR for 5141.52 for suicide prevention. So our BP and our AR have been updated to reflect the new law, AB 1767. And what this law does is it mandates that we, our district has an age-appropriate policy on suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention for students in grades K through six beginning this school year. So that 2020, 2021, so basically now. So the BP reflects the requirements to meet with stakeholders on the policy development and then coordinate with the county mental health plan whenever we make a referral for students in grades K through six that receive Medi-Cal. We also need to ensure that employees act within the authorization and scope of their credential or their license. This law, AB 34, requires our district to also post this suicide prevention policy in a prominent location on our website, starting now. So as soon as we get through the approval process on this, then we'll get it posted on the website. Next slide, please. Something that the AR was updated to show is that we've moved the material regarding the printing of the National Suicide Hotline Number on the student ID cards to a new section. This practice is something that our district has done now for a few years. We have the suicide hotline number on the back of our student ID cards from sixth through 12th grade. Something else that our board policy includes is a post-vention strategy to help monitor students and identify students that have been affected by suicide. And it also, for those that are affected or at risk of imitative behavior after a suicide has occurred. So the next steps on these, on November 19th, both the BP and the AR will return for action and information. And for the study session at a future board meeting, we'll, hopefully, we'll be able to talk about more detailed information on the exact measures and strategies that we use in SMMUSD for suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention.
Great, thank you, Tara Brown. Do I have any questions for Ms. Brown?
Can I just make a comment? I know, I know this is coming.
I see Richard, and I see Oscar, and I see Maria, so Richard, Oscar.
Forgive me for just jumping right down, I'm sorry. It's not a question, I just want to make a comment. It's not a question. I just want to make a comment. I know this is, it's, we'll come back to us with the session, right, Tara? So I appreciate that. And just when that does come back, would you be able to bring, or, or John, maybe we could ask the Dr. Drouet and his staff to bring back that there was a National Public Radio story this week about California audits on, on school districts. And I'd like to make sure that when we get back, we can have some of that information on, on this question about our prevention matters and what we do when there is a death by suicide.
I think you said the, the post-vention, that, that Ms. Brown, Richard was like, the post-vention.
Thank you, thank you. Yes. But, but I am right, John, right? That's, we're going to have the full session comes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I said Oscar and then Maria. If I, if I remember wrong, please correct me.
Yeah, just had a question in terms of, you know, have we seen an uptick in, in students trying to access counseling services for stress or anxiety or any, any type of mental health issues? And also, I know that we've had like suicide hotlines and stuff in the past. Is there anything, any resource that we should be promoting at this point, you know, considering the conditions of, you know, distance learning and, and students not, you know, interacting a lot with adults on campus? You know, I'm concerned for those students that might have needs, but they're not interacting, you know, enough with teachers or counselors. So we're not catching something. And so I was wondering if, you know, how are we promoting those support or services for our student body right now?
Those are all good questions. Um, Sarah, do we have that slide with like the specific things that we're doing in the school district that we can put up?
Hold on, technical difficulties. Okay, hold on one second. Let me re-share that.
I could address the first part of your question regarding current trends while we're waiting for it.
Oh, yes. Julie, Julie Lotan, our District Mental Health Counseling Coordinator is also here in our audience today to help support the questions and discussion on this topic. So she'd like to answer the first part of that question, Oscar.
So we've actually, I would say we're at a pretty typical rate of referrals right now across the district for where we were, let's say, last year at this time, which is interesting. I would have thought we would be seeing a lot more coming through considering the mental health of, of our whole community. I think part of what a barrier might be is that all services are virtual right now, as is school, right? So some students are not able to access through, through virtual means because of like a lack of confidentiality in the home, lack of a private space. We did see some students drop out of counseling for that reason in spring, which is not good. But, you know, we can't be in everybody's homes. But we, we are seeing some increase in depression and I would say we're seeing some decrease in anxiety, which is interesting, too. Those are just some trends that I've noticed. I don't have data. It's just more of anecdotal information at this point. That's just a little bit about what we're seeing right now.
Some positive things are happening in our district in, as far as measures and strategies that we're using for suicide prevention, intervention and post-vention. When we started actually sitting down and going through everything that we were doing currently and listing them all, it, it took up five slides. So I didn't show them initially tonight because I wasn't sure if the question would come out regarding specifics. But since it has, I did want to take a look at this slide. And we have after-hours crisis support on the secondary websites, parents learn how to respond if their, their child or another child might be having suicidal thoughts. We've had a back-to-learning mental health conference session that we've offered to our parents in August 2020. We had a parent education night that was sponsored by Semihai PT PSA and regarding the impact of COVID and distance learning on our school community. We've had parent workshops this fall by Edelman Child and Family Services. We've had sessions on stress, suicide prevention and substance use. Resources specific to COVID have also been placed on the district website. Our counselors provide social and emotional guidance for the students. Schools partnered with NAMI to present informational depression, suicide prevention. Our Malibu Boys and Girls Club Wellness Center has set up teen text lines that are available to all district students, not just Malibu. And we've had preventive seminars on stress and self-care and recognizing one's own self-worth. Semihai also offered a virtual grief support space on October 5th for students who have lost a friend to suicide. For Suicide Prevention Month, the month of September, we had presentation by Edelman Child and Family Services on suicide prevention during Semihai's flex time on September 24th. We've had information on suicide prevention posted for secondary students in wellness and counseling Google Classrooms. A resource letter was mailed out to all students, March 2020, with information on mental health awareness during school closure. It had links to helpful smartphone apps and suicide crisis hotlines. We had a wellness workshop. Information about depression and suicide prevention was presented to all ninth graders and 11th graders last year and this year. It's available during flex time for 10th and 12th graders. Lincoln Middle School partnered with St. John's YDP to offer middle school coping skills presentation for middle schoolers. So we, we've had a ton. I mean, I think there's like two more slides worth. I don't know if we want to go through them all, but we have quite, quite a bit of support in our school district for students in regards to depression, suicide prevention, intervention and post-vention. We've had staff training, every year there's staff training on depression awareness and suicide prevention. It's offered to all school sites, K through 12. That's been for the past at least three, four years. We've had information on signs and symptoms of, and resources for depression and suicidality that's posted on SMMUSD Health Services page. We have mental health counseling available through school site partnerships with SMMUSD and MSW interns and community agency partners for any students experiencing depression or suicidal ideation. Our Mental Health Counseling Coordinator and MSW interns attended training on suicide prevention by DeeDee Hirsch and Family Services Santa Monica. So there's quite, quite a bit going on in SMMUSD. I'm very, I'm very proud of, of what the support that we have for our students. I, I've been in other school districts and I've never been in a district with this much mental health support for students. And it's something for our district to be very proud of because it's such important work. It's the foundation of student learning. If, if a student's mental health is not where it needs to be when they come to the classroom, then you can forget everything else because they're just not going to learn. So this is the basis and the foundation of learning and where our district is supporting it. And I, I do want to thank the board. I want to thank Julie and our, our wonderful staff that we have supporting our students.
I think the entire district thanks you and Julie and your staff. This, this shows up on the agenda just as a discussion item to revise a BP and AR. It's just so much more than that. So thank you for taking the time to share this. This is the important work right now. So we look forward to that coming back on the 5th. And if there are more board questions, we can probably get them to you ahead of time, too, so you're prepared for it. Thank you both so much for that. We really appreciate it. Major action items, H1, adopt resolution 20-08, Week of the School Administrator, October 11th through the 17th. So there's two days left. Somebody who is leading this discussion?
I, I can speak to the agenda item. And you know, we, we've talked a lot tonight and rightfully so of, of a work of our teachers in distance learning. Important role is that we have school administrators, both classified managers and leaders and certificated administrators who are out there working tirelessly to work with their teachers, to support their teachers, to work with the systems, building the structures, problem solve, all of these things. And so on an annual basis, we take a moment to pause and thank our certificated and classified managers for all of that they do. They work very, very hard. They're committed. They're dedicated. They're inspirational. And they do a wonderful job in leading our schools. And so this is an opportunity to thank them and just take a moment to pause and recognize them for their contributions to our schools, our community and our students and our teachers and faculty, so.
Thank you so much for, for sharing that, Dr. Kelly, because it is true. We have, in this business, we definitely don't say thank you enough. We tend to focus on the fires that we have to put out, sometimes the literal ones, and we tend to avoid the thank you sometimes. So in, in that vein, I'm going to ask Board Vice President Lieberman to read the, the, the last part of this resolution.
I'm going to read the last whereas to. Whereas now, more than ever, the future of California's public education system depends on the quality of its leadership. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing board of the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District that all administrative school leaders in the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District be commended for the contributions they make to successful student achievement and declare the week of October 11th to 17th, 2020, the week of the school administrator in the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? I see Craig moving it. I see everybody seconded. I saw Richard. Everybody had their hand up. So let's do a roll call vote. Lori?
Yes.
Craig? Ralph?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that is seven zero. Thank you all. Thank you to all our administrators. Item H2 will not be heard tonight. We will bring that back on November 5th. I just got that information. So that will come back on November 5th. Item H3, Renew Resolution Number 20-02, Declaring an Emergency Delegating Authority to Enter Into Contracts Necessitated by the Spread of COVID-19. Review of Actions Taken Under BP 2210 Emergency Resolution. This is what we do at every board meeting to see what we are spending our money on. So I believe Carrie Upton will present this?
Yes.
Certainly, yes. So this is a renewal of the existing emergency declaration. This particular, in this period, in the last two weeks, there have been only three expenditures for personal protective gear, $750 for materials, $1,278. And then we renewed our contract with the forensic analytical consulting services. They are our certified industrial hygienist that in many ways are helping us while we don't have a risk manager, but also supporting us with all of our documents, our plans, making sure that they are appropriate, they're following the Board of Health measures, that they are doing everything, that we're doing it all appropriately, and that would be for $30,000. So that's what we spent in the last two weeks and we would ask that you, once again, approve this resolution with a fourth, fifth vote. And we'll keep doing it, coming back to you until this crisis is over.
Thank you so much, Mr. Upton. So do I have any questions for Mr. Upton on that? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion. I see Lori. I see a second for Craig. We'll do a roll call. Oscar?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is seven zero. That resolution is approved. Which now brings us to item H4, Approved Purchase of 1717 Fourth Street Office Building Doubletree Office. I assume this will be Carrie leading this off, but you know what happens when you assume.
Yeah, so yeah, Carrie will lead us off. And a bunch of us are joining him in the presentation.
And can I ask at this point, for a point of personal privilege, I guess it would be? Since I've been asked by one of our, one of my colleagues about whether I have a conflict of interest, I want to make a statement for the record to allay any potential confusion. I'll just remind everyone that the school board voted in June of 2017 to approve a new lease with the then owners, the Prakashanti Group, I think they are. I mean, that's the owners then. And that there was a long period of negotiations that led up to that. I think it started in 2014, culminated in 2017. And in an abundance of caution at the time, I did not take part in any of those negotiations, which went on for a long time. Nor did I vote because my husband's law firm had done planning and zoning advisory work related to the hotel for the then owner, the Prakashanti Group. And again, even at that time, none of their work had had anything to do with the agreement with the school district. But I wanted to be careful and, and not do anything in abundance of caution. So the hotel, fast forward, the hotel and office building were sold to the current owner, Santa Monica Hotel Owners LLC. Sometime, I think during the summer of 2018, Carrie can correct this if I'm wrong. My husband's law firm has never, ever done any work for the current owners of the hotel and office building at any time on any matter, anywhere whatsoever. And so I just want to state for the record that because of that, I'm completely comfortable that I have no conflict of interest voting on this purchase and I have confirmed that by sharing all the facts with the district's attorney.
Great, thank you very much, Lori, for clarifying that. And on that note, we will begin the discussion with Carrie.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Yes. Ms., Board Member Lieberman, I really appreciate, because I was, just in all transparency, I was the member that raised that concern. And I raised it because of all the, all that was going on with a councilwoman in, in her negotiation with the Miramar Hotel, her husband, I guess. It was found out that he, he worked for the owner of the hotel. So that, that was why I was raising those. But in terms of the, just, just to clarify, Board Member Lieberman, your husband, Chris Harding, has, since, since the Santa Monica Hotel Owners LLC in 2018 purchased the, the property, he's never worked for, for them, but also no one in his law firm has worked for them as well. Is that true?
No one, no one, no.
So there's absolutely no connection between your husband and the current owners of the hotel?
No, there's none.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Great, thanks. So, Mr. Upton, take it away.
All right, I am going to share my screen and PowerPoint. Hopefully that will work out well. Actually, I did that completely wrong. Let's try that again. Oh, can you see the PowerPoint if I start it from the beginning? Okay, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, success. Well, this is great. Thank you, Board Members, Dr. Drouet. So we're here to discuss a, a very exciting opportunity that has, has come to us and we've spent a long time discussing it. And we're now bringing it to the board for a decision. And that is for the purchase of the 1717 Fourth Street Office Building. So as Ms. Lieberman was just speaking of, in 2018, the ownership changed right after we completed the master lease. And the new owners, they were very excited to move that building along. So they reached out to us in the late fall of last year as the landowners to see if we would be interested in purchasing this building. As you see here, and I don't know if you can see my pointer, it is the office building that's on Fourth Street that's adjacent to the football field, the baseball softball field and the Doubletree Hotel. So it is adjacent to the hotel next to Samohai and in the Santa Monica Civic Center area. So the staff has been developing this plan with the existence and guidance of real estate, financial economics, construction and legal expertise. Many of those people are here tonight and some of them will speak and some of them are available to speak if questions come up. The board discussed this several times in closed session since the Brown Act authorizes legislative bodies to hold closed sessions with this negotiator for real property transactions regarding the price in terms of payment. So as for real property transactions regarding the price and terms of payment. So as appropriate, this was not a public or community conversation until tonight, because the board has that responsibility to make those, to do that in a closed session, so that we make sure and maintain the best possible negotiation point and deal. So that's why we're bringing it here tonight. Just to say that, we started this conversation in the late fall of last year. We were heading towards an approval come March or April, then the pandemic hit, and we put it on a pause. And we've held out for the last six, seven months while we have gotten to this point. But it is time for us to move this along. Okay. What's really exciting is the purchase will achieve the district's longstanding goal to relocate our district office to a better building and location. And this move will improve upon our educational mission and the operations of the district. And this move will reduce our current costs, increase district revenues, while improving operations and services to our students and family. In some ways, we're going back home, because the Doubletree site was formerly the site of the district office. So the district, and this is a little complicated, but I'm going to really be clear about this. The district owns this land, but the district does not own the improvements, neither the hotel, office building, or the underground parking. So what we were talking about purchasing is the office building and the access to the parking. So everything we're talking about is about buying a building structure that sits on our land. So we do have a ground lease with the hotel and the office building that pays revenues to the district's general fund. And the hotel will continue to pay these revenues. And for the current owners, the sale of the office building is part of the hotel's plan to upgrade and become a Hilton, which will increase the revenues to the district over the long term. So this is, in some ways, is also helping us by helping them, which helps us. So it goes back, but it is a win in many ways. So what the opportunity is, is to purchase this office building. Here's a picture of it. It is three stories with two floors of parking underneath. The building contains approximately 31,784 square feet of usable space. And we would have access to 106 parking spaces in the subterranean garage, which will be allocated to the district office building. The purchase will allow the district to consolidate several departments into one location, improving the collaboration and coordination. And I'm going to turn to Dr. Drouadi to talk about the real benefits and why this is a great win for our district.
Yes. You know what? I thought it was important that I speak to this slide. Look, we operate a huge and sophisticated organization, a lot of moving parts. As an example, we have over 1,400 staff members throughout the district, serving approximately 10,000 students. Our ability to establish a strong, coherent, and synergistic relationship between all divisions in our operations enhances our ability to better educate our students and provide the necessary supports in that effort. The decision to relocate the district office to the 1717 Fourth Street will absolutely allow us to increase operational efficiencies and better support the sites and better serve the communities. In our current setting on the 16th Street, we are limited with the setup of the office space and so on. I wasn't here when we moved to 16th Street, and I just learned today that district office used to be where we're aiming to move. So I think, but from my vantage point, we can do much better than existing here. Coming here, I don't know how many people have visited the district office, but it gets pretty, it's pretty chopped up. So really impacting communication, impacting efficiencies, and then ultimately impacting the synergy we need to make sure that we are responsive as we need. So I want, so the benefits are everything you see on this slide. Obviously, I'm not going to go through the details of it, you all can see it. But based on our casing out of different offices and all that, we're pretty excited that we'd be able to really enhance the operations by moving to 1717 Fourth Street. And that's it, Carrie.
Thank you. Sorry, I hear there was a little echo with my phone, so I switched it off. I'm going to turn to John Isom from Isom Advisors. I know he had another thing, but hopefully he is here and findable.
I'm here. I don't know that the video is working, but if you guys can hear me, I can speak to that.
I can hear you.
Great. This is John Isom, one of our, this is either part of our financial advisor team. And he has been helping us and guiding us through this process, along with so many of the other things we do.
Thanks, Carrie. Good evening, Board, District Administration, and members of the community. John Isom again. With Isom Advisors. We're the district's financial advisor, being a way to make this financially. Well, clearly, there's a lot of educational benefits. Talk just briefly a little bit about the structure and the purchase and the financial, you know, tool basically that we're going to use to make this thing work. Couple of things you can see here on this, on this bullet point. One thing we were really pleased with is, you know, at the end of the day, we actually think this is going to also be a general fund benefit, a financial benefit to the district. And here's how. You can see a couple of points here. Number one is that we will be able to free up lease revenue. Monies that we're currently paying for leases will be freed up, and that will help the district's general fund by being able to move from Fourth Street over to 16th Street, or excuse me, vice versa, 16th Street to Fourth Street. We'll be able to rent out 16th Street. And there's some information later on in this presentation that you'll see, to give you an idea of just how financially beneficial this will be, even at some very, very, very conservative assumptions. We also have an ability to use a stream of funds that don't come from the general fund. RDA facility pass-through dollars, these are dollars that the district actually currently receives, will continue to receive, and currently are using in the same, for the same type of a structure. And I think what's important, too, to note is just, this is a long-established practice, you know, that the district does use real estate assets to provide funds for district operations. And when it's all said and done, our big expectation, our big hope is that this is going to, to improve the general fund, is going to provide additional dollars in addition to the educational benefit, financial dollars and financial benefits with funding for teachers and staff, et cetera. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about the specifics, kind of, you know, some deal highlights, if you will. So first off, the purchase price, you're looking at a purchase price of about $21 million. Again, you know, Carrie had mentioned, you know, the district owns the land, but not the parking, not the building. So this $21 million would purchase the parking and the building itself. There's an expect, or there's a belief that this is significantly below market price. So that's a positive factor. The way that the district would finance this would be through what's called a certificate of participation. For many of you in the district and on the board that have been around, you're familiar with COPs, because the district has two COPs currently outstanding, one from 2001 and one from 2010, or 2010, excuse me. So we'll be using the same finance vehicle. It is a borrowing. One thing that we're really excited about is the fact that we are at historically low interest rates. Interest rates, frankly, have never been lower. You know, COVID-19, a lot of bad things with COVID-19, but one positive is just how extraordinarily low interest rates are. The other thing is, the district's COP credit rating is extremely strong. And by using this particular structure that we're looking at, which is the RDA increment, the RDA pass-through facility dollars, it'll allow us to get a better rate than if we didn't have this as somewhat of a pledge. And that's important, because right now, the district has a AAA rating. Its COP rating is usually two notches below, which would be a AA2. But with this specific pledge, we expect it to be a AA1. And the reason that's important is if you have a higher credit rating, you're going to get lower interest rates. So we're already in the lowest interest rate environment in history. And I think our expectation is with the AA1 rating, we're going to get a fantastic financing for the district. A little bit more, just in conclusion on that, on the RDA facility pass-through funds, and what that means, and how this is going to be structured. One component to this is that the COPs themselves are going to be structured with what is called escalating debt service. That means we slowly ramp up our payments from a dollar amount today at the conclusion of this RDA period, which is 2042. And so similar to our general obligation bonds, when we have an expectation of additional dollars, and we want to match our debt service payments with those expectations of future additional RDA dollars. That would provide greater cash flow for the district. And I think, given, you know, kind of run of our pandemic and the uncertainty financially that we're in, I think cash flow would be here. The COPs will be repaid with RDA facility pass-through funds. It's a mouthful, but it's specific. There are other RDA dollars that the district gets, gets to receive, puts in the general fund. RDA facility pass-through funds cannot be used in the general fund. They have to be used for facilities. They currently are being used for COP payments, as I mentioned before, in the 2001 and the 2010 COPs. So we're really going to kind of just consist, we're going to continue that trend. And I do want to point out that the district's payments, existing obligations on the earlier COPs, they do expire in '24, '25. And right now, it's about $2.6 million. And when they go away, we'll actually have lower payments than what we've been making these last several years. So that's another, again, we think, big benefit and big plus for the district.
I'm going to speak a little bit to the plan, as far as how we would do this and what we're doing. So the plan is to move and consolidate the district office functions into the new headquarters by, we hope, the end of 2021. So once the purchase is approved, architects will complete the design for the needed seismic upgrades and tenant improvements, creating a far more optimal, modern working environment for our district offices. After the acquired plan approvals by the City of Santa Monica Planning, that construction of seismic upgrades, tenant improvements will commence. The building will be empty when we take possession of it. The third floor tenants, the law office on the third floor, are about to be moving out. We do currently rent parking from the Doubletree, as was discussed earlier in this meeting, for Sam Ojai due to construction. Once we purchase the building, Sam Ojai will use that office parking, you know, from us, from December 2020 to June 2021, which reduces the amount of money paid to the Doubletree. It'll be money that'll go into helping with this move. Once June comes, that parking will go over to the office parking, but the good thing is we will have completed discovery over at Sam Ojai, and we'll have all of the parking back at Sam Ojai that we will need, and we won't need to be renting parking anymore. The district offices, departments, various departments will start moving late summer, early fall. We want to definitely move educational services by August 31st, which is when the lease on the space that they use runs out, because that will, that will mean we don't have to pay for that lease. Soon after, we'll move the Ed Foundation, which also has another very expensive rent that we have to pay. So once the second floor, so as soon as the second floor of the district office is vacant, we'll do a little bit of dressing it up, paint, carpet, so it can be leased out at a market rent. The first floor will be leased out in subsequent years when we move maintenance operation transportation, which we're still developing a plan for that. But we're excited about being able to rent out the second floor for an office space. So here's it in a schedule. So tonight, the board decides on the purchase, approves the certificate of participations, we close the sale in December, we begin designing the upgrades, we start construction, the seismic upgrades, tenant improvements in March, begin in August to move everyone. And by January 22nd, we hope to have the second floor of the existing office building leased out. I'm going to bring up another one of our specialists, Alan Coaten, who is one, who is our sage economist. He's worked with us, worked with City of Santa Monica, City of Malibu, a lot of our, you know, a lot of entities like us. He helped us with the Doubletree lease. And so he's going to fill in some of the ideas around the general fund revenue.
Okay. Let's look at this chart. And if you look at the top line, current office building lease revenue, that is the do nothing. That is how much money we are likely to get under the current ground lease from the Doubletree, or whoever they would sell the building to if it wasn't us. And so that's the starting point. That's what we get if we don't do anything. And if you look at the starting point, it, over the six and a half years in this particular, it's actually six years and seven months in this particular chart, it starts actually in December of 2020, and it ends in June of 2027. Over that period, we get about $1 million. Now, if we do this deal, since nothing, no, we're going to actually save money from the very beginning. And the reason we're going to save money is the combination of the savings and parking. This, now I'm looking to revenue to the general fund. The reason we're going to save money is that we are saving on parking, and we're being able to cancel certain leases that we have, where we're actually paying for extra space beyond the space we own in the 16th Street. So that's all the money we get really in the first year. And that's pretty much all the money we get in the second year. But in the second year, we're assuming that beginning in, in July of '21, we are actually beginning to rent, as Carrie pointed out, we're renting the top floor. We don't get a whole lot of money from the top floor, because we have to use the first year's worth of rental to pay for cleaning up the place. So that year, we have some savings. We have a little bit of net income from the, from the 16th Street. The following year, we have a million dollars. And that million dollars is from renting only the top floor of 16th Street, and the savings that we are getting from the leases that we're not paying for. Now, in 2023, '24, that number goes up, because for part of that year, we're actually going to rent the first floor as well. So, and then you can see that once we're renting the first floor, we're making about $1.7 to $1.8 million a year. Now, what is assumed here is that, as John Isom said, and as Carrie has alluded to, that the COPs are being serviced from the RDA pass-through facilities funds. Okay. What is kind of interesting, but not shown, is technically speaking, they don't have to be. Because there, once we get into the '23, '24 year, we actually have enough money coming in from the rent. But the beauty of this transaction is that that money that is coming in is coming into our general fund. It pays for teachers, it pays for supplies, et cetera, whereas you can't use the RDA funds for that. Now, that, so if you look at the difference between the two, we're basically going to make roughly $8 million, we project to make roughly $8 million over the next six and a half years if we do the deal versus $1 million if we don't. Now, okay. I'm in the numbers business, and the numbers business and projections is always suspect. So let's talk a little bit about how we got to these numbers, and whether they're conservative or not. We are assuming that the office space could rent for as little as $3.50 a foot, full-service gross, or you'll see, the numbers in the detailed tables assume that it's $2.30, $0.39 triple net. But the point is, if you just looked up office space, we're in at about $3.50. Now, that is lower than the current market, and even the current market with COVID. We were, and we believe, and the broker that we work with very closely on this, pointed out to us that Google, which is kind of a major employer and a kind of a bell cow in the system, is going to open, resume its office occupancy in July of next year. So we see that as a harbinger of a reopening generally of office space, but we are below generally, of, of office space, but we are below, we are below the median and average asking price today in our area. I, I actually did a little quick, quick check, and most of the stuff, a good deal of the stuff in our area, except for a few old, small buildings, is between $4 and $4.50 a square foot. And that, that's now. That is literally an hour and a half ago. And so, okay, and one other thing that I've been asked to do is, because projections are projections, and because of the fact that there is some ultimate liability for the district if it can't find any money to pay those COPs, I would point out to you, and this question did come up once, and I think it's worth answering, that in order for this not to happen in the general form that we have proposed, you know, the detailed numbers may change, but in the general form that we have proposed, and to have it do any damage at all to the school district, two things would have to happen that are in, seem to us to be, have a vanishingly low priorities. One is that there would be an extended and deepening multi-year depression in off, in office space that would make it worse than it is now for the next six or seven years. Nobody, nobody in my business is projecting that. They argue about when it's going to come back to a resurgence, and the argument is it one year, two years, three years, et cetera, but not will it. And the second thing that would have to happen is that by, by some magic, the RDA funds would have to disappear, because we can fund the purchase from either the rent or the RDA funds, and they would have to both go away. So, now, the last thing I need to, to share with you is, we have not programmed any increase. We have not programmed a recovery. This is all starting at these low levels and kind of notching up at two to 3% a year. We're not assuming that, as is quite likely, we will see four and five dollar rents, you know, within the next two or three years. That is, that is not part of the deal. So this is a consciously conservative projection. It basically accomplishes two things. It generates essentially about a million and a half or more dollars a year from leasing and rental savings, and that money basically flows into the general fund because we have the RDA funds, as John Isen explained to you, to pay for. And I talk too much, but I think I'm done. You're, you're muted.
I am muted. Thank you very much, Alan. We might come back to you later with some questions. Let me go to the next, okay. So, some miscellaneous considerations. We have been negotiating the purchase and sale agreement. We've also been negotiating a reciprocal easement agreement, and those are coming up. We're just about ready to wrap those up. We have also negotiated an amendment to the Doubletree master lease, because it required some minor changes to remove the office building, and also, we needed this, and we're trying to simplify the lease payment schedule, but it is not affecting the scheduled revenue increases relating to the upgrade of the hotel. So those are right down, you know, when, there will be no changes in the lease agreement, and the lease is still in a very positive, you know, heading in a positive direction. To do this, we do need to get a lot split that has to be approved by the city and then by the county prior to the sale, and that's in process. And just to, because I don't think I said this, is the parking lot, we would, we're talking about about 106 parking spaces in the sub-train and garage. So, to summarize, from everything we've looked at, all that we've discussed, this is a great opportunity for the district to achieve the goal of moving and consolidating our district operations, due to the limitations of our current existing office. And this office building addresses these limitations because it increases operational efficiency, it improves the educational support of the district's office staff. The proximity is really great in the Civic Center and next to Sam O'Hai, where about 25% of our students are, and it also enhances community access. It's easy to find, easy to get to, adjacent to a lot of the work that we're doing. The district is able to purchase this building at a below-market price with funds, borrow during the lowest interest rate in market history. The purchase will improve the district's financial position, and is potentially a general fund revenue generator through the increased property rents. And the purchase will not negatively impact the general fund. Alan, as he's here to do, made appropriate caveats around that, but, you know, by everything we can foresee and all of our projections, the repayment and the realized cost savings will come from the rental revenues and the RDA pass-through dollars, which by law are restricted to the facility improvements and cannot be used for the general fund. So, in order to approve the purchase, the school board tonight would direct staff to move forward with the purchase, instruct the superintendent to conclude negotiations, and sign the purchase and sale agreement along with the reciprocal easement agreement and the amended ground lease agreement, would agree to the expend of the escrow deposit of $800,000 out of the facility RDA pass-through funds. And then the next item, agenda item, is the one about the certificate of participation. So that's what we're asking the board to do, would be approve these three items. And just to return to this one more time, the purchase does help us with a longstanding goal to relocate the district's office. It improves our educational mission and our operations of the district, and it reduces our current costs, increases revenue while improving these operations and services to our students and families. And now, are there any clarifying questions from the board members?
I get to ask that, Carrie. First off, can you give me the screen back so I can see the board members? I would appreciate it.
Yes, yes.
Oh, great. Oh, no, there we go. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to keep this as we normally do. We will do clarifying questions. I will ask for a motion. We have one public comment, and then we will have discussion. Because we have a comment, I do ask the board members to keep it to clarifying questions first. I saw Maria's hand up, then I saw Oscar's.
No, just, I just have a question in terms of, like, a, a more, to give us more of an idea, like a historical piece in terms of the hotel, because at one time, at one point, you're saying that it was, our, our district office was already there at, at some time, and it moved. Do you know the reasoning? Give us a history of what happened and why it moved from there in the timeline, and, and when we sold? I guess at one point, I'm, I'm assuming that, again, at that time, because of financial situations, the, the board, the board at that time ended up selling the rights to a lease interest on that land to build a hotel, right, in the, in the, in the building. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. So, as part of the research for the sale, we did, you know, some pretty deep research into the property. It was a residential area until 1947, and sometime between '52 and '64, the district office was built right there on the northwest corner, right there at Olympic and Fourth Street. And this was also around the same time as the freeway was coming into play. So, during this period, Sam O'Hai and the City College expanded to the boundaries of the property that we now know as Sam O'Hai, and the area of the office building where it currently is, it was either used as a parking lot, or it might have been a discus throw area. I keep looking at the photographs, trying to figure that out. The highway was constructed between '64 and '66, and then in 1988 was when the deal was made to lease out that property and build the district office. At that time, the Fourth Street property was leased to become the hotel in the office building, and that was constructed. The district office was moved to Sixteenth, 16th Street, which was previously the Garfield Campus and used to house Olympic High School, before it moved over to what was John Muir, and now is the Obama Center. And also, we had another piece of property that was our maintenance operation yard at 902 Colorado, and that was moved into, the maintenance and operations part was moved into the district office, and then we leased the space for transportation. So, that was sort of the move. It was called the three-party move, or the three-section move, that helped us move there. I know, I don't have a lot of details on the why, but it does look like the why was, this was a financial opportunity that the board during a financially different time, and in the 80s, coming after Proposition 13, was challenging for many school districts. So, we imagine, and what we know, it was a financial decision made at that time to move and build the district office. One of the things that's not as clear is that the, is the district office, we own the land that the district office and the next, and the single-story building is. We have, but we own our building, our two-story building plus a little of the first story. We don't all own all of the first story, all the, one story. That's owned and part of our lease with STG. So, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
It was on mute. Sorry. I think Oscar, you had a clarifying question?
When we, the, the, the cost of the building is 21 million, is that, is that including also the, the property that it sits on, or just the physical building itself?
That is the cost for purchasing the building itself and the access to the parking. We already own the land.
Yeah, that, that was, that was my clarifying question, because we should, we already own the land. So I just wanted to make sure that the, that 21 million didn't include, you know, the, the property.
Yeah, and the appraisals that we've done were on just the building and the access to the parking. It was not for the land, and the appraisals show that the building, the appraisals exceed that amount.
Okay, so, seeing no other clarifying, oh, clarifying, sorry.
Yeah, I think they're more or less clarifying. I, I just, could you say, be a little more specific about the departments that'll be brought together that are currently not together now, so that there's some understanding for the public of why this is such a meaningful move?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So, right now, you know, where we, where we currently are located, we have our district office, and then adjacent to the district office on 16th Street is the Ed Foundation, which would be brought into the new building. In the back, and sort of disconnected, and it's, it's not far, but it seems often far, often far as far as the importance of our connection, is our entire Ed Services group, you know? And then the Ed Services are disconnected in some ways, and they're, and as much as I'm part of the business services team, I want to say our Ed Services team is our most important part of our district office. The, and then another group that we bring in here is our Child Development Services, which are currently over at Fourth and Ashland at the Washington West site. And they're quite far of a distance. So, bringing Ed Services, so bringing both, you know, special education, Ed Services, Child Development Services into the same building, and then aligning that with the rest of our district, we think is going to really improve our efficiencies and our ability to provide services for students.
Can I keep, thank you, Carrie. So, and even as part of that, can I get you to also, I, I think you alluded to this, but the district is currently leasing some of the space we're in. So, even though we own the building, where some of us are, or some of the district is, and the land, we don't own some of the space. So, we're leasing departments, and so when we give those, those lease spaces up, we're going to, that will free up more money, or give us back more money into the general fund, correct?
That's it, exactly. Is that the space where the Ed Services are, currently are, and the lead, and we also lease out space for the Ed Foundation. Once we are able to terminate those leases and move them into the new building, it'll save us over $232,000 from the general fund every, every year. Now, the space that, that CDS is in, we own that building, but we are going to look for new uses of that building also.
Okay, great. I had some other questions, but I actually think you covered, between you and Alan, some of them, when you're riffing off the PowerPoint. So, thank you very much. I'll save the rest of my comments for later.
All right. So, I, I think we're having a discussion behind scenes on, on, on Robert's Rules of Procedure. So, we have a discrepancy among our opinions. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to take our public comment. Now, we have one public comment. Let's do our one public comment, then we'll look, ask for a motion a second, and then we will go to board member comments. So, board member, Board Vice President Lieberman.
We, again, have one speaker on this item. Speaker is Nikki Kohoff, once again. So, Nikki, you have three minutes to address the board on this item.
Well, quick question, clarifying. Is this just item four, or did you guys combine four and five?
No, this is just four, just four.
Okay. And did you discuss whether or not the Boys and Girls Club was related to this in a potential user of a facility, such that Lori would recuse from that?
I don't know what you're talking about, and that wasn't part of anything we've ever talked about. So, I don't know what you're talking about. If you want to address it in your three minutes, please do. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. Okay, I'll start now. Well, I think that you will find that many of the people listening to the meeting tonight will find it mind-boggling that you are making a transaction this large as an action item without bringing it before the public before tonight. I know that, that you guys may have been looking at it for a long time, but you are a small group of people responsible to the public, and it is our funds and our land, and you owe it to us to bring it before the public to review. It is inappropriate to vote on something as an action item without bringing it as discussion first. You may have deal terms that are appropriate to be in closed session. That may make sense, but the entire concept of moving the headquarters and vacating to other properties without having a master plan, and without having an idea of what we are doing cumulatively with our overall district property, is just wrong. It is not planning, and, and the public is right to not be happy with the way that you guys are being stewards of our property. We need a master plan. You haven't said what's going to happen with Fourth Street. We don't know where you're going to lease it out. Also, Financial Oversight Committee was supposed to look at this. They last looked at it in December of 2019, where they were going to be charged with reviewing it. That never happened. At the same time, there were three people, Sean Landers, because he's also on a planning commission, had to recuse himself from our Financial Oversight Committee. They made no decision about this, actually. And in the same meeting, you guys discussed giving $20 million to Memorial Park, so the district could use Memorial Park. If we knew we were going to be vacating this land, why didn't we have a broader community discussion of perhaps combining the land when we knew, at least we all in the community knew, that the community could have benefited from larger Memorial Park land through 16th Street all the way to 17th, and larger fields? That was a huge issue when Memorial Park was being planned, that they couldn't get the six fields in, in any way, because the district wouldn't give up its land. And now the Memorial Park planning is done, you guys want to move. It's really wrong. It also never went to the Facilities DAC. You guys are skipping all your oversight. It's there for a reason, because you're supposed to come to us. Also, historically, you're terrible real estate investors. You gave away the gross up on the lease revenue by signing in a Speaker's time is up? No, I'm at 2:32.
No, I started the clock at 3 o'clock. Your time is up.
No.
Can I, can I, can I ask, can I ask her to finish her comments, please, for?
No, I, I, I think we do have a policy of three minutes. She chose to, she chose to engage with Board Member Lieberman as part of her public comment, and I think it's like, at a certain point, we do have rules. We do have meeting rules. We have an important conversation to do.
You ask the public all the time to follow up on their
I have a question.
John, can I make a suggestion, since the, the, I, I don't want to take away whatever 25 seconds because of the part she and I had, even though I don't know what it has to do with anything.
Do I see two other board members who would like to give, hear the last 25 seconds? I see Oscar. Great, wonderful. So, please finish the 25 seconds of the comment.
Okay. So then you were also focused on a labor peace agreement and didn't negotiate a profit for the, the first term of the lease. So you guys missed out on the profit sharing when the developer flipped it. You didn't require the developer to actually make the changes to the hotel that would require additional revenue. So, we're traditionally bad real estate investors, so we're generally not excited to hear this from you without more information and a master plan. Thank you. Was it that terrible to hear from the public, John? No. Was that that terrible to hear from the public, John? No.
Wonderful. So, um, can I now have a motion so we can move to discussion, please?
I move the item.
Thank you, Richard. I see a second from Ralph. Um, let's, great. So now we move to board member comments. Craig, did I have you on the list? Did you want to speak or were you, did I miss you?
Um, I was just offering the second. We do want to speak at some point. I don't necessarily want to go first, but I could. Does somebody have more passion for this? Okay. Um, um, you know, I'm gonna, it's, I'm gonna speak, um, past what we've talked about tonight to my experience of this, my perception of being in the public domain for a while, my position as an advocate for education and for focusing on the needs of our kids. And I think the first thing that we thought was a board, and I think probably the first thing many members of the public are going to think is why would a school board buy a building in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of COVID evacuation of office space, stay at home? Why would they bill, buy a building for their district staff, which is not a classroom? It's not a school. Why would they do that? And, you know, it's worth pointing out, and I'm not up for election this cycle, but we have two board members. We have an election going on right now and it's a time of heightened sensitivity. So doing it in this particular moment adds a whole nother element to it, which is also contraindicated. And what I want to say to the public is we understand that. We're very aware of that. And we have looked at this for, Carrie, I don't know, six months, more? Whatever the timeframe is, it seems like forever. We've been talking about it, sending back, getting new numbers, thinking about it. We looked at it one way first and said, yeah, we, it's too complicated. Um, we want to just make it as clean and as simple as, as we can make it. And when we made it as clean and simple as we can make it, it becomes an opportunity that we can't not take advantage of. If it's an opportunity, which I'm gonna, I think, argue it, I, I think I'm hopefully gonna argue to your satisfaction, the public satisfaction that it is. If it's an opportunity, this is the last chance we're going to do this. It, when somebody else buys this building, it's gone and we will never have this chance again. And if we need to move district headquarters, who knows where that's going to be, when that's going to be. It almost, it, it can't possibly be as convenient as this, which is actually on land we own on the Sam O'High campus. Um, so we have one chance to do it and that chance, we actually had to extend. Can I, Carrie, can I talk about the extension or is that, I shouldn't, like, we had to extend? Can I say that? Stop me before I say something I'm not allowed to say.
Yeah, yeah, you can say that. Yeah.
You're not on my screen. Hang on. I'll go to, um, so we actually had to extend the deadline for our discussions with the seller because we needed more time. So we're out of time. We're literally out of time on this. Um, and we're, we're not rushed. We've had enough time. We have the data. I'm, for me, it is as clear as day. This is the right thing to do. And it's the right thing to do because the current headquarters layout, the, uh, the, the lack of being able to move from place to place, the fact that we're actually in three different buildings that are in some cases geographically distant and in other cases are simply, um, not connected by internal corridors that, you know, we're also, you said in your presentation, we believe in 21st century, believe in collaboration and workspaces and getting people together. You know, our buildings are not designed for that. So this is a step up in our ability, you know, Apple had a whole thing when they built their headquarters about how the internal design was designed with collaboration in mind. We have an opportunity to do that ourselves. Um, then, so we need to do that. Then you turn to the finance, the first part of the financial piece, which is we're paying rent on the 17th Street property. We're paying rent on the Ed Services property. We're paying rent, uh, we're not paying rent on the other property which we own, but that down the road could potentially be a revenue, revenue earner for us. And we're gonna, about to rent, as we discussed earlier, a whole bunch of parking spaces, which we won't have to rent. So the first thing that happens when we do this move is we get a much better space where we consolidate our staff, where they're going to do a better job of leading the district. And while there's no question that the, 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 the tip of the spear for doing our work is in each and every classroom, each and every teacher with their kids, the district office is an important part of that and the effective functioning of that in support of those people is really, really important. Then we have an opportunity savings of all this money that we're currently spending that we don't need to spend. Then on top of that, we create this in a cash flow positive way that adds to the bottom line of the district, to the operating budget of the district. And one of the things that people who've been watching this for a while understand, but most of the folks don't understand because it's technical, we work with two different budgets. We work with a, a, a facilities budget. Carrie, what's the fancy word for it? You know, it's not bonds because this isn't bond, but it's.
It's the RDA, the Redevelopment Association RDA.
No, the non-general. It, we have a general fund that we spend on education for our kids and then we have other monies that are restricted. For example, we can't spend.
Restricted or categorical.
There you go. So we can't spend bond money to pay for teachers. We can't, RDA, we can't pay for teachers. So we're stuck in two different pools and frequently we get questions, why are you, why can't you take your bond money and spend it to pay for raises for teachers? We'd love to pay for raises for teachers, but we can't. That's not how it's designed. So this creates money that we can spend in the classroom. We have more money when the smoke clears. We have a fantastic building that brings all of our staff together in one place. We have an opportunity we can't pass up. And if we don't take advantage of it now, we are, we'll never have the chance again. And is there some risk that it could all go pear shaped? It's miniscule and it is so wrapped up in so many other things that this would be, if, if we get to an area where this ends up being cash flow negative, we would be in a very, very different world than we're in today. And that's not a world any of us anticipate being in. I used the example earlier, you know, if you win the publisher's sweepstakes, you could fly to Florida and the plane could crash. Like there are ways, scenarios can go bad, but they're black swan, 60 standard deviation stuff. So can we assure the public that this will never, ever, um, have an issue? No. But based on everything we know today, the probability, the expected value, the variance of the outcomes is incredibly positive. It's great for us that we have the building. It's great for us that we have the positive cash flow. It's great for us that we're no longer paying money out of the general fund to pay for things that we, that instead for space that could be used in the classroom. So from my point of view, in spite of the fact that it would have been so much easier to not be discussing this, to not be discussing this now, there's no question that this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
I have a Lori and then I think Oscar had his hand up and I think Ralph might've been on the list too. So I have Lori, Oscar, Ralph, unless I miss out people.
Um, I've, so I would like to echo, um, Craig's comments and try to not be too redundant and try to be additive if I can. Um, I, I do want to reiterate that this opportunity arose at first prior to COVID. And, um, what is true, the one thing I will say that's true that Nikki said is that it wasn't planned. But I, I just want to say for anyone who's listening to this, the district does a lot of planning as most of us do in our households or workplaces or whatever. And then sometimes opportunities come along that you didn't expect and you have to take them and decide where they fit in with what you're planning. And do they offer opportunities earlier than you thought you'd have them or maybe opportunities you never even considered? But things do happen like that. And so while this was not planned, um, to happen at this time or in this way, I do think it's an opportunity that isn't going to come again in this way. We don't know if we said one of our goals in our planning for the district, which it is, is to bring all these departments together somewhere. We, we don't know when that opportunity would present itself in this way, um, and, or if it would, or how it would work. So everything doesn't, doesn't happen that way. That said, when something comes along, you don't just say, oh, drop everything else I'm thinking about and just do it. We haven't done anything like that. We have turned this over, asked questions of our staff and consultants, um, over time. And, and in that sense, I, in that regard, I do want to say that I'm a member of the facilities, the board facilities subcommittee along with Craig and Ralph. And I do want to really particularly, um, give them a shout out in public because I want to say that within our facilities committee meetings, Craig and Ralph have helped raise every conceivable question. They have really been both great partners to me as well as great representatives of both the community's interests and the district's interests, if you will. And I think what Craig is trying to say is that this purchase is in the, the interest of the district and the community. And we have asked the kinds of questions that the community should want to have answers to. And we are satisfied that the answers are as good as we can get them, that the financing opportunities, as weird as it is to buy a building during COVID, what it's also meant is that the opportunities are kind of amazing in terms of the low interest rates and other things that wouldn't occur in another time. So, um, along with savings on space that we're renting that we shouldn't have to rent, we should be in a building that we own where everyone is together. And that's what this is going to happen. Along with that, um, as, as I think Alan Cotin would put it, this creates an independent source of additional general fund dollars that are not dependent on a new tax or on waiting for the state to give us more money. This is a way to essentially obtain what it's estimated at a million and a half dollars a year. It could be less than that. It could be a lot more than that, depending on how the economy improves and, but depending on how quickly we come out of COVID and all of that. But, um, I don't think we can underestimate that. We've gone to the, to the community for parcel taxes. We've gone to the community for other kinds of innovative taxes, anywhere where we can meet a goal of our district to bring our central office functions together in a better place that is more accessible to the community and more accessible to our school, our, our schools next door to Sam O'High, um, and bring in general fund revenues. It's hard to ask for more than that. So I, I want to say that I, I just, I, you know, I, I think we've been careful. I will say that for me, I was skeptical at first about this, but I've been satisfied by the answers that we've been given and by the diligence, I think, that we've done as a board and, and that our staff and our consultants have done for us really. And so I, I want to just reiterate for those who have expressed frustration about the way this decision feels like it has been reached and the way that it seems to have come quickly. As Craig said, it hasn't really come quickly. But what is true is that the Brown Act creates several limited exceptions to the rule that deliberations must take place in public. And one of those is for real estate negotiations. That's exactly where this falls. And I think the intent of that exception is fairly obvious. It's really to protect the public's money by establishing that government, a governing body can negotiate more effectively and look at the possibilities for different kinds of payment and any other information that helps determine the value of a real estate purchase or negotiation. And that has to be done in private because it simply can't be conducted in public. So, uh, you know, that's uncomfortable because we are used to having all kinds of people have a lot more time to review our decisions and give input in our decisions. But there's really a reason for this. And so I just wanted to articulate that. And then I want to say that despite that, um, the questions and concerns that have been raised over the last 10 days since this issue has come up and since we've tried to share information with people have been taken seriously. And I think that the PowerPoint presentation reflects responses, not only to the questions that we've been putting for months, but to some of the questions that have been raised by members of the public, including members, certain members of our financial oversight committee. And so I, I'm hoping that those of you who are watching and those of you who have weighed in and asked questions feel that the questions were satisfactorily answered because I do. Um, and I just want to reiterate that this is an anomaly. It's not the norm that we do deliberations in private, except for in areas that the Brown Act allows for. And this is simply one of those. I, and the last thing I'll say is that I think that the Daily Press article the other day, in anticipation of this, captured actually the, the decision that's before us pretty well. It explained the benefits. Um, I think sort of answered the questions without them being posed. And so, um, I want to appreciate that and direct anyone who's concerned again to, to that article, which is, I, I think it was two days ago, maybe it was, it was probably after, right after the agenda item was put out. But in any case, um, I want to support this and, and say that I really think it's a, it's a smart decision. And though unplanned, it's a great opportunity and I just don't think we can pass it up.
Great. I have, thank you, Laura. I've got Oscar and then Ralph and Maria. Did you want to get in the queue? Okay, Oscar, Ralph, Maria.
No, you know, I appreciate all the comments and the work, uh, that, that has gone into bringing us to here to this point. Um, $21 million is a lot of money, you know? It's a big investment and we haven't really talked about sort of, you know, what, what other options do we have on the table for that $21 million? You know, that's not the discussion we're having because as, uh, you know, Board Member Lieberman stated, it's an opportunity, you know, that came, uh, you know, forward that the hotel, you know, is, 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 is coming, uh, you know, is bringing forward. It's the hotel coming, you know, wanting to have revenue for projects, you know, that, 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 that they have in mind, you know, that they, they can, they have control over that. Uh, one concern that I do have is, you know, with, with the property that's on the north, north side of the hotel, there's a housing, there's affordable housing, there's, there's, uh, renters that are living there. And, you know, one concern that I have is by us giving, giving this, uh, this, uh, you know, capital to, to the hotel, um, they, they, they'll be moving, you know, soon to, to displace those tenants. And I know that there's, there's rules, you know, state law and local law that protects, uh, you know, tenants and, and there'll, there'll, there'll be some, um, you know, some protections for that. Um, and usually, you know, the, the hotels will, will create, you know, affordable housing elsewhere or maybe onsite, you know, but, but those are the types of things that concern me in terms of, you know, action, reaction, sort of cause and effect. And we don't have all that on the table, you know, but it does, it does bring concern to me. I have concerns. The other thing too is, you know, it's $21 million. We're foregoing an opportunity elsewhere, you know, uh, we are in COVID. I mean, right now we have buildings, all of our buildings are empty. You know, so it is, it is another big question in terms of what is the future of sort of office space, you know, and, and, and does that building really lend itself, you know, to the future sort of how we're going to operate, you know, in terms of, um, you know, how, how we, how we, you know, bring people together, you know, stacked up in, in three, four stories. You know, um, the, the pandemic has, has questioned, you know, a whole lot in terms of, you know, how we utilize our, our space. And, and so, you know, I have concerns about that, you know, it's, and is it, is it the and is it, is it the best, you know, investment right now? You know, the twenty-one million dollars, we could do something else with, but is it, is it the best investment right now? Public funds for a public education institution, you know? And I know we talked about all the, the moving around and so forth of, of the district office of bringing people over, you know, to, to this new site. But we don't have a lot of clarity in terms of, you know, what, what can happen aside from leasing, you know, at, at the other site. And one question I have is, is it, is it, do I have the ability to ask those questions? You know, is there, is there an opportunity for me to ask questions related to the possible uses of the property on Sixteenth and Olympic where our current district office is right now? That's a question. Can I, can I ask those questions and engage in a discussion on the possibilities for that, for that site?
I know we have our counsel on this call, and I think we discussed this a little bit in closed session, that we know we've, in, in the presentation we're putting forward, we allude to renting the Sixteenth Street space, taking our existing space and leasing it to other tenants. I think that's the only topic of discussion that we are, we are broaching tonight concerning Sixteenth Street. And if Dean wants to say anything else, I'm more than happy to let Dean.
We have, we have our attorney with us. So Dean, would you like to answer my question?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. The only, the only thing on the table with the Sixteenth Street property is, as Carrie mentioned in his presentation, is to lease the property as it is.
Okay. And, and the reason why I bring this question up is because I have been to Memorial Park planning meetings that the city of Santa Monica was, was spearheading. Now, I want to make it clear that the city of Santa Monica is not, you know, the Santa Monica Mount, we have a school district. But in terms of their discussions and their community input sessions, they had, they had plans for our property. And I, I'm not sure if anybody in our school district signed off on those slides that they presented to the community, but that's, that's why I bring up the question that I'm bringing up right now in terms of the possibilities for the space on, at our current Sixteenth Street location. And, and, and just in, in closing, in terms of process, how, if, if we, if we did not take action, because we could, typically on big, big, major action items, we usually have a discussion item and then we take action. That's typically the way we do things. I know we're doing this a little differently around because it's a real estate, you know, transaction and negotiations and all that. But would, would, would it be possible for us, like, do we have a timeline right now that allows us to come back in two weeks to book, to, to bring this forward as a major action item? Or do we have to vote tonight to approve this negotiation?
Carrie?
Yes.
Flexibility or is the decision need to be made?
Well, our option to, our, our agreement with them that they will not go out and find someone else to purchase the property will conclude before our next board meeting. And we have extended this option for, I think it's seven months now, and they've been relatively clear to us that they're not ready to extend the option again. And this is what I keep saying and what we've been discussing in the closed session is that it's really getting, it's, I would dare say it's to a place of, it's a yes or no at this point.
So, so you're saying we, we, we have to vote tonight? We, we wouldn't have the opportunity to, to get two weeks to come back and vote as a major, major action item?
The board can vote to approve. The vote, the board can vote not to approve. The board can give direction to go back to the seller. But what I can say is, is that we have used up all of those extensions that I think they're ready to offer us. And what they've communicated is that we would lose the opportunity if we were to vote no or extend at this point.
No further questions. Ralph, and then Maria. Ralph Metzger, you got to unmute.
You really want to hear what I have to say, not just look at me?
We love looking at you.
These opportunities don't, don't come very often. You know, you can go back to, as Murray asked, you know, sort of the history. I don't, I mean, I was around, I don't a hundred percent recall. Well, I know that Garfield was there. So the district had properly, that was underutilized on Sixteenth Street. It had an old headquarters that was on Fourth Street. And had people came along and what they did is they built all the new buildings on Sixteenth Street. The district owns roughly half of it, the buildings in all of the land. And, and, and in return, they got to build the hotel and the office building. The problem with the way that, that was set up, well, the, our building was, was not a well-designed, well-built building. And the district has suffered from day one. There is history to that. And, and there was a, a revenue, you know, there was an income sharing piece of the lease that never came to fruition. So the district never really got any monies but the base rents. So that's why a number of years ago, we renegotiated the lease for the property to, to the benefit of the district. And over time, there will be millions of dollars that come, come to the district as that hotel is transformed into a higher-grade hotel. They may or may not, you know, extend it, but as their revenues increase, we now will, will get monies from gross revenues as opposed to net income. And that's sort of like how the movie industry gets away with, you know, these blockbusters and somehow people never get, get any of that money. So we'll part, we're participating in, in gross revenue. And some of that consultants that are here tonight have been involved with us, you know, all through that process now, which is, I don't know, six or seven or eight, eight years. So they're very familiar with, with the property, the structure of our agreements. And, and I can't say enough of how thorough they've been, you know, in helping, helping the board understand what, what, what this is all about and to help us make, make decisions. The, so what we, what we get by moving back is to, is to, and it's, it may or may not be, I don't think we know that the hotel wants to sell it, so they have money to do other work. They're part of the, they're one of the largest hotel operators, I think, in the country. So this is about the, you know, that they, they just aren't in the office building business. They're in the hotel business. And so they came to us, they, they, they made a very, you know, a very good offer because it's, it, it works for them and, and it certainly works for us. And even in the economic turmoil we're in and the, you know, and Lori said, you know, that Craig and I did a great job. Well, Lori was right there every step, step of the way with us for the last nine months in, in battering our consultants to give us more and more details of, you know, of, of what this deal was about, how it's going, you know, can it benefit the district? What is the risk for the district? And one board member, I've certainly come to the conclusion, you know, that this is a very low risk opportunity for, you know, for the district and that, that it can't work for us. And, and educationally, it really allows us to, you know, pull together. So it's been, what, 20, 35 years since the district made decisions about how to operate and what might work. We're at that point again where we have the opportunity based on, on who we are and what our, you know, intentions are moving forward to pull our departments together, to be in the same space, to work together. It's, it's convenient. You know, there, there's parking which we don't have now. There's parking, you know, in the hotel. There's parking next, it's going to be next door at, at San Michael High School. It's adjacent to bus routes, to public transportation. It's a forward-thinking thing to do. And so, you know, it, it, it just makes all, all that, all that sense. You know, the city, and, and we get the benefit of forward-thinking from the, the city many years, you know, years ago of creating a redevelopment district that allowed, allowed for, for growth and, and projects, which on, on increases in assessed value brings money back in to the community to make improvements. The school district by law is entitled to some of that money. And so that's money, that is, that is the money that's going to be used to, you know, to help pay for the cost of this building. So it's the community, you know, in the early nineties, creating the redevelopment authority, which over time provides us funds that can only be used for capital projects. And so here we're going to be able to use it to create a new, new headquarters for the district to really help, help the efficiencies and, and how the staff, operational staff all work together to the benefit, again, you know, of the district with a very, very low, low risk, as, as Mr. Cotten said. You know, our intention is, is just to lease out Sixteenth Street, which will bring in revenues. We're going to be very fair in, in the lease rate. And, you know, make sure that we've sort of built a cushion around what we're doing now. It's, it's, it's as safe as you can be to do this. This opportunity won't come around again. I'm sure we could look at how else could we use, use these funds? It can be used for, could be used for, for lots of different, you know, other, you know, let's say, capital projects. But we, we're going to lose out on the opportunity to, to purchase the structure that sits on our property and make the, you know, a high, highest and best use of it that we can. So this is, it's been a lot of work since, you know, since this first came out. And, you know, the, the board again, that, you know, demanding as we went through a lot of, you know, closed session issues about this to, you know, make sure we're getting a great deal. And I'm, you know, looking forward to, to this happening and lifting the spirits of, of the entire district in doing this project.
Ralph, real quick, as an architect, do you feel the, the building is, is functional in terms of the space to accomplish what, what you said will be accomplished? You don't think it's obsolete? You think, I mean, it was built a long time ago. Do you, you still feel it's, it could, it could work?
Yeah, so it's a good question, Oscar. Thank you. So there's two things, you know? Any building built at that time, you know, potentially has, has, has some risk design-wise. So, you know, the district will be making some seismic upgrades, which every office building built in that period, steel frame building in, in LA is, is making. This is a result after Northridge of new requirements. So we're strengthening the building and it's an open floor plan. You know, so it's great flexibility in how we use it. If over time, the way school districts operate changes, you know, we'll be able to move, move, move things around again in, in the future. So, yeah, this, this is a great opportunity for us to to take over flexible space that we can use well.
Great. So Maria, I do want to point out too that during, during one of the presentations from staff, I know that Carrie Upton does have floor, floor plans of what, how we would use the space, who would go where. Board members would like to see that. I'm sure Carrie could bring that out after the next board member comment. If that, and we've seen it, but we could share with the public. Just, I'm looking for heads.
John, it's on the back, it's on the last pages of the presentation.
The appendix?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, maybe Maria will give her comment. Carrie, you could just queue it up and maybe we'll just do it. Thanks.
No, I think that would be great, at least to share that there, there is some plans. I can, like, and I won't be, I'll just get, reiterate some of the points just quickly. If this, you know, this investment came to us, this, this purchase came to us probably December of 2019. I think a lot of us were skeptical. I know I was in the very beginning because of the economic situation, the budget, I guess, at that time. We had not really come to terms in terms of how we were going to, to, you know, work with the budget with the deficit that we have. But, you know, we have had great, I think, consultants between Alan, who was Cotten, who's been working with us with the real estate, Dean Pappas, our attorney, who's giving us legal advice, and then Josh, I think we did the financial piece of it, kind of explained to us the opportunity that we had to purchase this property and make like, like Board Member Metzger said, to bring, to, to be able to make that, that piece of property whole again. Because we own the land and now we have the, the actual structure that goes, that, that's, that sits on that land, which would be great. A great opportunity to bring together the, all of the different departments of central office into one building and to make hopefully a good remodel piece so that we're not, like we're doing now, having to piecemeal a lot of structures in our present board meeting room because something always go, it doesn't work. It's an old building. It wasn't constructed well. So we always have a lot of issues to be able to, to make it work, to make, you know, people, to have the internet work, anything. Just that building is, you know, where the, on the Sixteenth Street is not perfect. And hopefully we have this opportunity to do that now. And yet the investment comes at a point that, yes, we are going to spend 21 million, but it's done, like we said, with monies that we're not asking the public to do another, another bond or parcel tax or whatever to support this or to sustain this purchase. But we, we will borrow money, you know, against, against, let's say, the, to, to purchase this building. However, the fact that we are going to be able to generate income out of this. So yes, we can find probably another investment for the 21 million, but it's sometimes, a lot of this is, is, is is the investment of 20, of 21 million is something that we won't get anything in return. And in this case, we will have money coming back to us in return in terms of when we begin to lease the pieces on Sixteenth Street. It's going to be real viable. There's a lot of companies that have always been looking in Santa Monica for office space. And despite, you know, the pandemic and everything kind of slowed down for it, it's, it's picking up whether, even if you go through another phase of pandemic, Santa Monica is, is a world city. So people are always looking to the city to, to have, to set up offices. So I'm sure that once they know that, that the Sixteenth Street building will be open and available, I think we're going to get people that would want to lease that for us. And then, then they make their own improvements from within the building to make it viable, make it work, make it work for them, for the, for their company. But we don't, I don't think I make my, my decision lightly. Like I said, I think for the first time we'd have good consultants that have given us good advice. Unfortunately, maybe the other board members that made the prior decisions that we kind of like, when, when we negotiated the lease with the hotel, they, they didn't have the good advice from an Alan Cotten or a Dean Pappas or a Josh when, when they negotiated that, that, that lease with the hotel, which was really bad for, for the district. But we were able to do that with them, with their help, with, especially with Alan's help. And so we're making, I mean, well, hopefully we'll be making more money once the, the hotels start filling up again and the normal, hopefully the normal tourist situation. Even with COVID, even with a new way of, I think, tourism, once it does change and it's not going to be maybe coming back the same, I think you're still going to have people coming back into the city of Santa Monica and it's going to pick up within the next year or two. So I, I, I agree and I think I approve that we move forward with, with this decision to buy this land. We'll never get that opportunity to do that again. And for us, it's like, for me, it's, I was, I was always told never sell property because it's, especially in Santa Monica. And here we have the opportunity to buy something that's under market with a low interest rates that, you know, that we can make money for this district, that we could put into the general fund in the next year or two. So, anyway, hopefully, hopefully Carrie is ready to, to show what we have in terms of the new, what the district office would look like.
Yeah, Carrie, can you give us the, the nickel tour of the, those three pages in the PowerPoint? Thanks.
I will. I'd be happy to. Now, to say that what this is, is this is a test fit, which means that it is not exactly the way we're going to lay out everything or everything goes. One of the things we felt was important to Brit was Uh, one of the things we felt was important to Brit was to bring on an architect to look at it, uh, make sure that the building was sound. This included a structural analysis and to determine what would be needed to be done for the seismic, uh, which was less than we initially thought, uh, but still there's some, you know, bracing that has to be done. So what we're seeing is a test fit, which is can everything fit? So we start off with, currently the second floor of the district office is 18,000 square feet. And then between what we use for Ed Services, Ed Foundation and, uh, CDS is another 5,000 square feet. So we get up to about 23. We have 31 to work with. I did tell everybody, I did tell the architects, expand everything by about 25% just to make sure we have a little bit more extra room. So this just shows you some of the looks of where it is. Let's see, and I need to start the slideshow from the current slide. Sorry. There we go. So as you, as you see once again where it is, where it sits, happily in the civic center. So on the first floor, we would develop a, uh, new, so there's a, there's an entrance with an entrance lobby, which, uh, can, does have controlled entrances, elevators coming up from the, from the parking down below. What we've talked about right now is we do a new district office space that's as big or a little bit bigger than the one we currently have. Conference board room, conference rooms, and then a space for human resources. So the human resources can get right in and you can see and, and adjust, they have them right there. And child development services on the other side. So we have them, uh, set up on the first floor. The second floor would take you, uh, up to the whole fiscal area, which would include purchasing human resource, uh, purchasing some human resources, uh, and food services, and testing rooms, additional lounge space, print shops, other rooms that we need to have for a little bit larger room. And then on the third floor, we'd have the, uh, Ed Services here on this side with, uh, sorry, special education here in this area, Ed Services, and then the district's, the superintendent's office. We have a few more things to put together, like where, uh, Ed Foundation will go, but we do believe with all the space that we've set up and we have, we have enough space for everything we need, uh, to fit the district office as it is with a little bit of growth. We think we'll actually probably be going the opposite way with district office as far as size, but these are the test fits that we've worked out so far and it, it does fit the building and we are ready to get going on designing it.
How mu- how much is that going to cost, Carrie? How much does it cost on that?
Who lost?
Are you muted?
Sound.
The construction cost is 3.7 million, total cost 5 million, and that's wrapped into the COP payments that we'll be discussing next.
Great. So I had just one, Maria, are you finished Maria or did you have more?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, great. I just have one short comment.
In total, we, just in, in total then, we're talking about $26 million for the whole plan, about.
Yeah.
Great. So I just want to say that I, I appreciate the great work done by the, the liaisons, Craig, Lori and Ralph really dug in deep on this, the whole board dug in, but you three did most of the lifting, uh, the consultants. For my own personal, uh, decision matrix on this, it was education first. Is this a sound decision for the education of the students in Santa Monica, Malibu? I believe that it checks that box clearly. The fact that we're so spread out in three spaces and our child development services, they're, they're not even in the same space in their building. They've got one group set up on the east part of the building and one group set up on the west part of the building. So they're not even in, in contiguous. So I believe it checks the education box. Second, are we using our properties to generate revenue? Yes, we are putting our real estate to work. Instead of just, instead of being land rich and cash poor, we're trying to bring more cash in, which we need. We need it for teacher raises, we need it for student support. This is a step in that direction and it's steady revenue without going back to the taxpayers. And third, I believe it's the best encumbrance of our financing ability. I believe it's our best encumbrance of our COPs. I believe it's our best use of the RDA funds. It's not going to limit us from doing other work that we need to do around the district. But I think for, for what we're using it for, this is the best use of our ability to finance and generate the most impact for it. So I, I appreciate the work. This is nine months of work that went into this and I appreciate this was not random. So that's all I have to say. I don't think Richard needed to make any comments. He told me he was okay with, with everything. So I would just ask if any of their board members have anything else to say? If not, we do have a motion in a second and I'll call the vote. All right, so I will call the vote. Lori?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Oscar?
You know, I, I wanted to say one thing before I vote is that it's a, almost a $30 million project. And, and it's something that we don't really need right now. It's not something that, no one has said we need this. It's almost like a want and we've got to respect the taxpayers. And so I'm voting no.
Great. And my vote is a yes, that is six yes votes and one no vote. So that item passes six to one. We have a, a related item to this coming up right now, so we can continue a little bit of the conversation. Major action item, uh, five, adopt resolution number 20 dash 10, authorizing the execution, delivery and sale of, uh, 2010 COPs. So I would assume that Carrie will kick this one off again as well.
No, it's me.
Sorry, Melody, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. It's perfectly okay. You're just the money girl, you know? So, um, I'm going to kick it off quite honestly, but I'm really not the expert when it comes into, when it comes to this. This is in regards to, um, the COP for the purchase of, of the, um, um, office building, excuse me, at 1717, uh, Fourth Street. And also to do some refunding of the, the existing COPs, um, for our savings out there. So I'm actually going to kick it off to, to, uh, John Isom with Isom Advisors. He's going to also, um, have Courtney Jones of Jones Hall, and, which is our bond counsel, and then, uh, John Berisi from Raymond James that, um, might, um, pitch in with him. So John, take it away.
Thanks, Melody, and, and again, good evening, board. What you have before you, uh, is essentially the legal documents that would authorize, uh, the district to issue up to $33 million in certificates of participation, none of the words, uh, in, you know, essentially debt for this purchase and this renovation of the property. Similar to general obligation bond, uh, resolutions that the board has approved, similar to refunding resolutions that the board has approved, similar to the old COPs that this district and prior boards have approved. Essentially, this authorizes you to proceed, uh, provides the legal parameters for this financing to go forward. As Melody pointed out, there are two components to it. One is a refunding, uh, of those old COPs. There's not a lot of years left. I think I'd mentioned to you, there's only a few years left on it, but it's still $100,000 in projected savings, uh, which we certainly want to take advantage of. But the big piece, of course, is the, is the new money and the dollars of which that would go for the purchase and the renovation of, of, of Fourth Street. Couple of specific elements to that. Right now, the structure of this is to be about a 22-year term. Why 22 years instead of 25 or 30, which might be a little bit more standard, is we wanted to match it up with the term of the RDA. So the RDA extends to 2042. You saw on those earlier slides, the district has been, you know, receiving millions of dollars a year in this most recent year of over $4 million and it's expected to, to increase actually over time. And so this debt service, as I mentioned, on the COPs is designed to escalate and increase over time as well. Again, this is the way to maximize debts or maximize cash flow, excuse me, to the district and, uh, and in, in provide basically the maximum cash flow benefit to the district. So that's what you have in front of you. The, the, the financing is not done just with your approval. From this point forward, if the district does decide to approve the certificate of participation documents and resolution, uh, there's two key steps that, that we undertake. One is to get, uh, the certificates of participation rated, uh, similar to the geo bonds that we've had rated in the past, or that's our credit score. And I think I mentioned to you before, you're a triple A geo bond credit district, uh, with this RDA pledge, uh, given the significant coverage that it has, meaning that we don't even need the general fund at all to, to do this. We've got the rents, we've got the RDA. That pledge will allow us to, to trade at a double A1. And once we have that credit rating, then we would actually go into the marketplace, price the certificates of participation and then lock in the interest rates at that point in time. So while financial, for interest rates are fantastic now, we don't anticipate there to be a significant increase in rates. We do expect to get this financing done, uh, you know, in, in short order in the next 30 to 45 days. But it does start with you, it does start obviously with this authorization. So happy to take questions, uh, on the topic. Again, joined by colleagues, Courtney Jones, that is.
Oops. You just froze.
And then also you've got John Berisi. I'm sorry?
You froze a little bit and it was fine. You came back to us and you.
So Courtney Jones of Jones Hall, who is bond counsel is with us tonight. And then we also have John Berisi, uh, who is with the district's underwriter, uh, that can also provide some financial insights if you have questions related to, to that as well.
So are there clarifying questions? I know we addressed, uh, John Isom addressed the, the COPs a bit in the original presentation. Are there questions on this item and? How this transpires? Yeah, Maria?
Just, just to clarify, I know you said we still have, oh, Bobby, about maybe three or four years left on the old COPs from 2000, early 2000, 2010. Once we, I guess, um, you know, the new, we get the new COPs, what would, how much more does that increase in terms of, of the payment that we need to repay back with the combined, um, the three COPs in?
You bet. Yeah. So what, what we've done, we're, you know, again, being mindful of the cash flow of the district. We structured this in such a way so that there's actually no payments in the first two years for the new COPs. Currently, the existing COP payments are about 2.6, 2.7 million dollars. So I'll just take you through, you know, five, five figures for you. So we've got the existing COP payments, 2.7, 2.7, and then we will have our first COP payment on the new COPs, combined with the old COP payments, and then we go to 3.4 million. The next year, 4.1 million. And then the first COP actually drops off. And so our payments go down to 3.8 million. And then all of the COPs, the 2001 and the 2010 drop off, and then we're left with just the 2020. And then the payment goes down to 1.6 million. So we actually will be paying less, you know, in four or five years from now than what the district has traditionally been paying. Now, again, keep in mind that 1.6 million is going to be escalating debt service. So it might be 1.6 million next year or, you know, in four or five years, and thereafter 1.7, 1.75. At the conclusion of the 2020 COP, the last payment is, is projected to be 2.5 million. And that's with your RDA dollars continuing to increase, the RDA facility pass-through dollars continuing to increase. So the district really, you know, short of having those COPs, having it paid off, you know, a couple of years ago and, and having them go away now, uh, you know, this is about a near perfect lineup of extraordinarily low interest rates, an existing dedicated source of funding that can't be used for the general fund, that we will be able to apply towards this, that will also produce those rents that Alan touched on and that Carrie touched on, that will provide the district with, with a lot of flexibility financially speaking, both through the general fund and through facilities.
Let me just ask another question. You know, I guess I would consider them like a mortgage that you pull out alone. And at any time, there's a possibility if better situation arises, that they could be refinanced and, and get a better deal?
Great question. Crystal ball, I think these will never be refinanced because we are in this incredibly low interest rate environment. However, we will be sure to allow for that. That's what's called a prepayment provision or a protection or a redemption provision. And we include that in all of the legal documentation and that will be included here. So who, if there's a COVID 2029, uh, and interest rates are low enough and we could refund these, just like we're refunding, uh, these 2010 COPs right now as well.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for Ryan Reynolds? I mean, John Isom? I, I shouldn't make, make light. I mean, we're doing serious business here. I just, I just, I can't look at John Isom and not think that I'm talking about Ryan Reynolds.
He does look good.
But, but, but seriously, uh, I, I think you covered it really well in the beginning. That was a great question from Maria to clarify that. And any other financial technical questions for the payments of this? This is our time to share it. All right, I will, I will ask somebody to move the.
Anything?
Speakers?
Well, no, John Berisi's here. I don't know if he has anything he needs to, what, would like to add.
Berisi?
Uh, no, I'm, must there any questions in particular on the market? I'd be happy to address them.
Okay.
Okay, seeing that, I'm, I'm going to see if there's a.
Wait, Chris, Chris, John, that we have speakers.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
So we have three of them. I, I mean, I, one of them, the first one is Nikki Kohoff, second one is Kurt Schwengel, and then the third one is Patty Braun. Though Patty, I didn't see her name when she signed up and put building purchase, so I, I think we should give her an opportunity to speak on this. And I don't know whether her comments really went to this or the previous, but she can figure that out as we go. She's been presumably watching this. So first Nikki and then Kurt Schwengel and then Patty Braun.
Okay. So on, on this part of the item, it, it goes to the use of the funds because it's not just for the purchase price. And so this gets to, uh, you know, what are we doing with the property and the other properties, because that dictates how much you guys are borrowing. And so, you know, in the presentation and also in, you know, responding to the discussion before, you know, to clarify, it may be the right thing to buy the property, to merge the parcels, because you all never, the district should have never leased it away in the first place. So reclaiming the parcel is one issue, but what to do with it is a completely different issue. And that, I think the public was entitled to discuss. So there was no public vetting of what you're doing with that and that incurs costs. You're making guesses on what you're going to make and you're also saying what you're going to do with it. Those are public issues. You can't have your, have it both ways and say that this was unplanned, but that every stone has been turned over. It's just not possible. Maria blamed prior boards for making horrible decisions with a lease, but you guys were the ones who renegotiated it in June of 2017, and I think maybe with the current professionals on the phone. So it's all your deal. It's been planned for over a year. We could have discussed what was done with it. It's unbelievable that you guys have floor plans for office space for district staff and we don't have a return to school plan. People are not going to be happy with this. You're spending your time on things that aren't important. Buy the parcel back, but rent it out as office space. Stay in your uncomfortable spaces. People aren't going to want to hear that the district staff are getting $5 million of renovations when they're already in, guess what, the air-conditioned buildings? And there's still, what, at least five schools without air conditioning? These are the wrong priorities. You all may be excited, yeah, the jobs need to be done by district staff, but this is not education. You could tear down the building and merge it with field space. You could have sold the 16th Street parcel for 20 million to the city for the memorial park expansion and we could have been a cost neutral transaction. There's a lot of other things that could have happened here, but it wasn't vetted by the community to discuss. Okay? And so why tear it down? I mean, why not talk about tearing it down for field space? Why not talk about just hold? Buy it and hold. You know, you don't have to actually take out the full amount today. You could buy it and hold, lease it out and wait and see what happens in the market. You don't know that it's all going to lease back up. Those are all predictions in the middle of a global health emergency. I mean, it's just kind of silly to predict that. And, I mean, the priorities are just all wrong. You need to focus on getting our kids back to school, not on renovating district office space for staff. Sorry.
Thank you. Kurt Schwengel?
Hi, Derek, can you hear me?
Hi Derek, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. First off, thank you board for your amazing decision kindergarten. As a 25-year teacher, kindergarten teacher in the district, you've done the kindergarteners of this district an incredible service. And I have one comment and then a question. The comment is, I really think PR wise, you would do wonders by really specifically telling us why you need to be closer to the Sam Ojai students. You're making it sound like the district employees are tutoring them when we are not, you know, I mean, like, please be more specific about it. Because as you talk, you know, that you're moving, you know, closer to 25% of the students, you're moving further away from, I don't know, 60% of the students? You're moving further away from every other school in the district except Roosevelt maybe, and maybe Muir or something. But so my, my one question is, do you have the price per square foot of the 6th Street versus the 4th Street properties? Is that easily, is that on hand? Done and that's it. And then I'm done.
Thank you. Let's hear from the last speaker before we talk anymore about this. Patty Braun.
Hi, thank you so much. So I'm also a member of the public that with a differing opinion. And I really wanted to speak to authorizing the purchase of the building. I listened tonight. I read the article in the Santa Monica Daily Press. And I really appreciate council member Lieberman's explanation that the timing did not allow for a more full public process this time, this one time. And I also know we're discussing it now. And in response to one of the previous speakers, I also know the district can do several things simultaneously. And I know that the reopening process is well underway and y'all are working hard on that. And I think that's important for people to know who haven't yet been a part of one of the stakeholder groups. As I said, I read the Daily Press article. I really appreciate the work and the care that has gone into the negotiations and the presentation tonight. And since this isn't, this is RDA money, not out of the general fund, not going to be taken from teachers' salaries or preventing teacher raises. And since this move will provide a significant revenue stream for the district general fund, for teacher salaries and teacher raises. For the district moving forward, I think it makes all the sense in the world to join all the district departments together right next to our flagship Sam Ojai. And this opportunity absolutely should be taken. We will never, ever have this chance again. And I want to thank you for the very thorough presentation. And I think there are a lot of people in our community behind it. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, speakers. That puts the question back in your hands, John, for the board.
Excuse me?
There were, there were a couple.
Can I say something? Really quick? I'm sorry.
I can't see who's, who's on.
Yeah.
If, so if you'd like to make, I'm sorry, if you'd like to make a public comment, can we have the, you access the form to do so? We're about to get to public comments right after this item.
Hi.
All right. So there were a couple of questions that came up during, during those comments. Normally we don't get too deep into that, but especially when a teacher asks a question, I do like to give them some, some sort of answer. Carrie, so I think the two things out there, Carrie, were, I guess the first thing is, did we consider other options for what we did versus moving in now and doing these renovations? Versus renting this property, doing that. I know you don't want to get too deep into that, but maybe just address a little bit of the process. And I don't know if you or Alan can just give us a, just a really brief information about evaluations of, and maybe Alex as well, evaluations of 4th and 16th Street. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask Alex in a moment to help with that. The answer is yes. Did we consider leasing out the 4th Street property and staying in the district longer while we worked out some more details? And, you know, came to a decision or gave us more time? Yes. We determined that the best course was to go ahead and push forward. There's some real savings by going ahead and pushing forward and getting us into the new building sooner. So we did consider and we were advised by the board subcommittee initially, and then the board in closed session to push forward with the move into the new building. The question about the comparison of the two properties, a little bit in square footage, a little bit in the question of whether we're talking about lease property or sale, but I'm going to bring Alex Trepanovich, who's with Lee and Associates. He is our real estate advisor who has helped us so tremendously through this entire process. So Alex at least can opine for at least a minute on this, on this, I'm sure.
All right, I'm unmuted now. So I guess the, the, the comment on the evaluation. So for 4th Street, we're looking at about $660 a square foot on a office building with a, you know, four blocks from the, call it four blocks from the beach in Santa Monica, west of Lincoln, which is really an extraordinary price for that. And then, you know, three per thousand parking or more than three per thousand parking. So from a market standpoint, it's really, really extraordinary opportunity at that pricing. With regard to 16th Street, the view on 16th was we took an extremely conservative approach and underwrote numbers that were closer to 240 triple net for an office space, which is actually less than pricing currently for industrial space in Santa Monica. So we really wanted to, or be very extremely conservative for the public and for the district in our, in our expectations and underwriting. And so we ran it at a very conservative number on that leasing. And so we would probably be one of the lower priced alternatives in the city in 2022, when our expectation is past the pandemic, that we would be leasing that site.
Thank you very much, Alex. Thank you, Carrie, for that clarification. Do we have any other comments or questions for staff on this item? Actually, let me, let me, let me step back a second. We still don't have a motion in a second for this item. So do I have a motion for the item? I see a motion from Craig. Do I have a second? Second from Ralph. Wonderful. Do I have any further comments or questions for staff on this or in general? All right. Seeing that, I'll call the vote then. Lori.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Oscar.
No.
Yeah. So there's six yeses and one no. So that item is approved six to one. I don't, general public comment or general public comments?
Yes, we have four, I believe. First one is Noel Lewis and she'll be followed by Timothy Richard Brandt.
Hi, am I unmuted?
You are.
Hello, everyone. What a long night. So I still am returning to the issue of there doesn't seem to be a deadline for actual facilities improvements in order to have a safe return to school. I think we can all agree that distance learning, even though we've tried to buttresses, is probably suboptimal. And probably not the best social condition for our kids. So we've got eight more weeks of district learning as declared, and we've probably got about 24 weeks of an opportunity to rescue some of the learning conditions that would keep our kids competitive versus districts like Los Alamos that have been in hybrid now for quite a few weeks and in time for state testing. So it would be nice to hear a little more about actual deadlines and actual plans that are not sort of vague. The second thing is we did have some community interaction and that was basically no speaking allowed, just comments in chat and selective comments being answered. So I hope to see more two-way communication in the future. And it would be nice to have data on the families that do want to return to school and surveys that make sense of that. And frankly, the two binary choices we have here for school are about the most unappealing in, in about the 50 plans that I've surveyed. So I'm not sure where that came from. They probably weren't community directed. And they don't allow some of our most vulnerable community members to make plans to work and go back to life. We're all existing. We know COVID will be going on into 2021, 2022 school year. We need to rehab these facilities. And we need to get the kids back in school safely and have a plan that works for the teachers also. It sounds like the teacher bargaining is completed. It would be nice to have an actual announcement that teachers are not standing in the way of this, of, of going back to school. Because I think there is some perception around that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Timothy Richard Brandt, followed by Tasha Buchioni and then Nikki Kohoff.
Hi. So this is my first time speaking or attending a meeting. It's been, it's been an interesting experience. Hi, I'm Timothy Brandt. My son Tyler is in first grade at Edison and my son is in third grade. I just, I'm here to ask, what, why, why is the focus all on continued, continuing distance learning and not about getting our kids back in school? This is an absolute tragedy. This is not working for the young kids. What are we doing to our children? We're failing them. Kids' lives matter. Many of our kids are falling behind. They're not getting the education that they deserve. Tonight I hear a whole lot of enthusiasm about purchasing in real estate, which I want to add is kind of weird considering that office space is, is completely empty and, and the whole market is upending. So I don't know why there's a rush by building, but I guess that's none of my business. It's tough for many kids to concentrate, especially for a long period in, in front of a computer. I've, I've witnessed this. We've all witnessed this in our pod. We have different learners. Some, some kids can, you know, focus on a computer like my daughter. But other kids like my son are very fidgety and, and they're not getting the stimulation that they need. They're not getting the interaction from other kids. I heard the phrase tonight enthusiastic and engaged about kids. That's not happening. Trust me. Many kids are lashing out through anger. My sweet little son Tyler, happy-go-lucky kid. I've never seen this kid have fits of rage like he has now. He started doing this in the middle of the school day and he's not the only one. So we're witnessing all the kids in our pods having these fits of rage, having these outbursts, having these angers. What are we doing this for? This is a little bit off topic. This, I mean, I know we have a tyrant governor, but the curve is flattened. I mean, the curve is absolutely flattened. There's nothing happening in hospitals. Kids have an extremely low risk from this disease. It's less than the flu. The latest CDC numbers, the IFR for, for children from 0 to 19 is .00003. As a recent article in the Atlantic stated, kids are not super spreaders. There's no concern about kids being in school. UK, Germany, Sweden, Iceland have had kids back in school completely open. There's not been one documented case of transmission from students to teachers. Recent studies suggested most of transmission is happening in the household. Like what, what are we doing, guys? What are we doing? Like, we need to reopen our schools. Furthermore, we all interact in real life outside of the school. We all go to the grocery store. We, you know, we meet in our pods. Like, there's no reason why we can't have kids meeting together in their classrooms. I want to talk a little bit more about cases. I know there's a lot of hype about cases. I know California has, you know, these, these different color codes that basically are about impossible to get out of because the testing's flawed. I don't know how much you know about this. There's a recent article.
Speaker's time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tasha Buchioni and then Nikki Kohoff.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'm going to keep my camera off because I'm actually lying in bed with my child right now, who is, it's about bedtime. While I understand the, the fact that many parents want their students back in school, I have to say I'm very concerned about the prospect of the simultaneous face-to-face and distance learning hybrid model that I've heard about. I have many teacher friends across the United States and the ones who are attempting this sort of instructional model seem to be the ones burnt out and the closest to giving up and leaving the profession, either through retirement or taking leave, or sadly, many are considering just walking away. Simultaneous hybrid model is probably the worst of both worlds. It will bring increased risk to both teachers and students who are present in the classroom and won't really offer any of the benefits that in-person instruction used to afford us. There will be no ability to share materials, no collaborative groupings or small group instruction. Station rotations won't be possible, no ability to even take kids outside to use our outdoor spaces because students who are zooming into the classroom will need to participate and won't be able to do that if we go outdoors. Simultaneous hybrid instruction will mean kids on computers, isolated at their desk, getting the same instruction at school that they could have safely gotten at home through our 100% distance learning model. I myself am part of a co-teaching model at John Adams Middle School. And I know that collaborative classes have become more and more common throughout our district. This collab model puts two or more adults in the same class to support and differentiate for students who are English learners, in my case, or who have an IEP. This sort of collaboration is fairly straightforward on Zoom right now. And in fact, we just had a session today with an ELA teacher, an ELD teacher myself, and our special ed instructional assistant. All of us facilitating differentiated instruction in separate small groups of students and students sometimes moving between the small groups as needed. How would that sort of model factor into simultaneous hybrid instruction? I do not personally feel safe traveling between multiple teachers' classrooms and further, furthering the cross exposure between different groups of teachers and students. Sadly, one of my current students has COVID right now. If we were in a hybrid setting, I would have been exposed and probably would have spread that exposure to both of my co-teachers and across all three grade levels. I'm very curious to learn about how the district would plan to address testing, contact tracing and quarantining any exposed students and teachers in these sorts of situations. Finally, the kind of technology that would be necessary to enact the synchronous hybrid model is expensive. And I wonder how our district would have the budget to invest in something like Swivel or Owl or whatever technology would be chosen when we don't even have the budget to follow through on the one-to-one Chromebook adoption. If in-person students are forced to share a class set of computer while the district pours money into technology that would be used for this synchronous hybrid model, hopefully only be used for a short period of time, it would be a real, a real shame, I think, and a waste of district funds. So I just wanted to.
Speaker's time is up.
And I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Nikki Kohoff is our last speaker.
Okay. I just wanted to touch on the return to school plan also in that I, I think the process still has the same flaws that it did over the summer. And I think you'll find that most parents will say the same thing. Over the summer, there was no two-way feedback. I attended one of the smaller meetings yesterday. We were able to ask some questions and get them answered. But that was in, you know, I think there were maybe 12 or 15 parents in that group in the town hall. I don't see how that will happen. And I don't think that Dr. Droudi was really that pleased to answer a lot of my questions. You know, parents have, he was getting asked a lot of questions about staffing. There are a lot of things that really have to be fleshed out, you know, like which teachers really are willing to come back and not. You guys have to ask that question at some point and really soon. There is planning that needs to happen. Other schools are moving so far ahead of what we are doing. And we have the money and we have the creativity in our community that we should have figured this out. Palace Verdis is doing better. La Cañada is doing better. If we had just been willing to look at best practices and actually sit down with our community. Palace Verdis has had three parent committees. Dr. Droudi says meeting with parents has issues. Parent committees have issues. You know, we are the community. We do have good ideas and he may not like all of them, but it's how you, you get better ideas in the end is working with people with different views. I mean, you guys talk about diversity of opinion all the time, but have a lot of trouble walking the walk. You know, we need to, to be identifying who the cohorts are. Part of the reason the other schools succeeded is they identified their cohorts before school started. They're not going to have to do a big shuffle. There are so many kids. I, I think the, the survey results were totally accurate about not wanting more screen time. 75%. Our school, our kids are all reporting that to us, but getting them back to school with the lack of planning. But getting them back to school with the lack of planning is really going to hurt us. But how are you going to get more planning fleshed out if what's happening now is just a bunch of town halls without a real discussion and real interaction? You guys submitted a plan to the county that was bad. You knew it was bad and you didn't want to edit it from the dais. And they're going to give you comments and you're going to have to resubmit something, but you have no good input from the community to put back in there. Second, we have $10 million to spend on COVID and I don't really see that happening in the way that parents are asking for it. And HVAC should not have been delayed. Carrie Upton told me that John Keen decided on his own that HVAC would be delayed from this past summer till next summer for the five schools. And that is unacceptable. That should not be a decision one board member can make. You know, that should be happening now. We need to get our kids back to school safely. And another, you know, the staff time focusing on the office building and not getting our kids back to school is, is really unacceptable. And we need two-way discussions in order for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't see John anymore. That's the conclusion of the public comment.
Conclusion?
Yeah.
Great. So that is the end of general, board member items. Do I don't have any board member items? So do I have any board member comments?
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead, Oscar.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I mean, this is like my fifth time bringing this up, that we get a report on diversity in hiring with the data showing, you know, how many people of color we've hired, you know, what positions, and, you know, we're just a disaggregated, you know, presentation on race, ethnicity, gender, so that we can just, you know, get a pulse of how, what our hiring practices look like in our district. And we've seen these before. I don't know what, where the hesitation is, but I hope we can get that report agendized and, and provided that discussion.
Thank you, Oscar. Other board member comments? I do want to share, because there were some comments about reopening. We do have a special board meeting planned for November 12th, which will be dedicated to summing up the next four weeks of conversations with the community, with our bargaining units, with parents, with everybody else to work towards that November 12th meeting. So that's where the district will be able to put together the four weeks of a public input. So that is November 12th. With no other board member comments.
John.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I guess, I know that we have some town, town hall meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks. And then we have our special board regarding ours coming back, but I really will encourage the schools individually to continue having that conversation up at their town halls and if their, if their particular parent families in each of the schools have more questions that they have, that they open up their meetings, you know, whether it's BTA or school site counselors, or just even having a town hall within their own schools to, to answer more questions and get more feedback. And that way we'll have a broader, you know, is it return of, of views of, you know, how they feel about the, about the plan, you know, about reopening.
That is, that is the expectation, so.
Is it, okay, well, I hope so. And thank you, thank you to the teachers. I was actually, I know a few of us have been going into, into the Zoom classrooms to do visits. And I think it all, you know, it's, it's, you know, it varies, but I think, thank you to the teachers because you're doing as best of the job under the circumstances. Some of them, you do a great job. And I know some of the students, the younger ones are having a hard time. So I do, you know, Mr. Schwingle, I do understand those pieces with, and I think the other parent that mentioned that, you know, the kids are having a hard time, the younger ones in the classroom. So I think we just need to kind of stay focused and making sure that we do what we have to do to, to get us back, you know, for those that are willing to come back, the teachers to come back and, and be with us, that we're, we're willing to go and, and bring the kids back as safely as we can.
Thanks, Pierre. I just want to say something quickly. What I'm learning, and Marie and I are doing a lot of forums lately, as is Oscar, we talk about a lot of things in meetings. And we really, not everything gets to the public. I'm not sure if the, of the public understands how many small group meetings are being held right now, how many stakeholder meetings are being held. Dr. Drouadi and team were at CDAC, Special Ed District Advisory Committee the other night. They're, they're talking to the different DACs, they're talking to groups. So it's hard because everybody doesn't see the work going on, but it is happening. I do want to speak to the teachers who have, who have come here and given us comments by email and in person. We know that due to state and county restrictions, that we are limited by how many students can, can get back on a campus. We're going to have to find solutions. And I know that these next four weeks, we need teachers to be part of the solution. We need to get teachers engaged in the discussion. We need parents to get engaged in the discussion. And at some point, we've got to get those two voices together. Because what we saw from the survey today, there, there is a disconnect in what parents and teachers are feeling. And we've got to start looking at solutions. We know that here's where we have to get to. And we have a jumping off point. People are at the misconception that what we present is written in stone. What we're presenting are jumping off points. We need to get the teachers and the community, families, engage in the discussion of problem solving. Here's the problem that we have, how do we solve this to best educate our children and keep people safe? I have tremendous faith in staff, but the next four weeks will address this. I'm speaking it now, so the people that don't see it happening, maybe you're reassured to some degree that it is happening. It's hard. If you're not part of that conversation, you feel that conversation did not happen. But we are working to make sure that anybody who has a voice that wants to be heard will get heard. It might not mean you get to ask 30 minutes of questions, but we're going to do the best we can to accomplish that. Everybody is working for the same goal, the best education for our students. That's our goal. So we'll get there. And I appreciate everybody speaking. I appreciate everybody coming out and sharing their opinions. Misrepresenting facts is one thing, but sharing opinions is wonderful. We're going to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of Elisa Sato, who was a retired classroom aide who passed away in late September. Elisa was part of the SMM USD team for over 30 years, working as a special education aide at Will Rogers, John Adams, and Samo High. And her six children, Gary, Teddy, Glenn, Scott, Leanne, and Eric, matriculated through those three schools. Glenn is now an engineering teacher at JAMS and Leanne is a physical education teacher at Samo. They are truly a SMM USD family. When she wasn't in the classroom, Elisa could be found at a volleyball game, supporting her children as they competed. Three of her children were volleyball Olympians. Gary was an assistant coach on three Olympic teams. Eric won a gold medal in 1988 and a bronze in 1992. And Leanne won a bronze medal in 1992 and played on the 1988 US team. Her other children were also competitive volleyball players in college. Her family joked that they often sat far apart from her at games because she was very vocal in her cheering. Elisa made her own mark on the sport, scoring for nearly 50 years, earning the first Southern California Indoor Volleyball Hall of Fame Lifetime Service Award in 2017. She also ran the Pepperdine volleyball camps for nearly 20 years. She even met her husband, Richard, who passed away six years ago while playing volleyball in her home state of Hawaii. She will be dearly missed and fondly remembered by her sister, brother, six children, nine grandchildren, one great-grandchild, and another great-grandchild on the way. And all those students and athletes she supported and mentored over the years. So we'd like to adjourn the meeting with a moment of silence for Elisa Sato. Thank you very much, everybody.
Real quick, John, John, I'd like to adjourn also, also in memory of Maria Tejeda. We had a tragic accident here on Pico Boulevard this past Tuesday. Maria Tejeda was a leader in our community and well-respected in St. Anne's Catholic Church. And she's also the mother of one of our teachers at Edison Elementary School, Edison Language Academy. Ms. Tejeda is a, you know, her, her loss is big in our community and I just want to also recognize her and adjourn our meeting in her memory as well.
Let's please take another moment in the memory of Ms. Tejeda. Thank you for sharing that, Oscar. I'd seen the news, but I didn't know was a member of our family. So thank you for sharing that. We'll see you all on November 5th. I wonder what the world will look like in a few weeks' time. So have a, have a good few weeks, everybody, and be safe and be well.